Good evening, Cerritos residents and the members of our community. I would like to call to order the Wednesday, May 7, 2025, 7 o'clock PM, City Council Successor Agency Special Meeting. The invocation will be led by City Clerk Cindy Nava, and the pledge will be led by Councilmember Mark Polito. If the audience would please rise, if you are able for the invocation, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, Cindy Clerk, City Clerk Ms. Nava.
Thank you, Mayor. If you would please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, as we gather this evening, we ask for your wisdom and guidance. We thank you for another opportunity to convene and discuss opportunities to continue to improve upon our service to the community. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing, and please join me in the salute to our flag. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, will you please conduct the roll call?
Council and agency member Hong?
Here.
Council and agency member Polito?
Here.
Council and agency member Se?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem and Vice Chair Johnson?
Present.
Mayor and Chair Yokuyama?
Here.
Presentations. The next item is 5A. Presentations. Hello. So I'm honored and proud that for our City Council presentation today, we are recognizing, the city of Cerritos is recognizing, Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. The city of Cerritos is proud to join communities across the country in observing Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. The month of May has been dedicated to celebrating the rich heritage of the AANHPI communities in the United States and in our city of Cerritos, and to the recognition of the important cultural and historical contributions that they have made in our country and in the communities we call home. Cerritos is grateful and thankful for the contributions of the Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islanders who have helped to make the city a community rich in cultural diversity. In recognition of AANHPI Heritage Month, which is the month of May, at this meeting, the city is proud to recognize Ms. Hong Lee, President and co-founder of Seniors Fight Back. Seniors Fight Back focuses on the promotion of safety and awareness for seniors in the AANHPI community. And I should have said this first, can Ms. Hong Lee please come up? I'm gonna start over. In recognition of AANHPI Heritage Month, the city of Cerritos is proud to recognize Ms. Hong Lee, President and co-founder of Seniors Fight Back. Seniors Fight Back focuses on the promotion of safety and awareness for seniors in the AANHPI community. Since 2021, Ms. Lee and her team have been providing free self-defense workshops, resources, and tools to AANHPI seniors and anyone 18 years old or older interested in attending these events. The city is grateful for the valuable service that Ms. Lee and her team provide to the Cerritos community. It's nice to meet you, Ms. Hong Lee. Would you like to say some words, please, about Seniors Fight Back and yourself? And also, you could call your team up and introduce them.
Good evening, Mayor Yokuyama and members of the City Council. My name is Hong Lee, and five years ago, while I was at a restaurant in Los Angeles, I was actually a victim of a racially motivated hate incident. While waiting in line to order my lunch, I was told to go back to Asia, followed by two minutes of hateful derogatory and sexist remarks. After I called the police, I was told that this is normal, it happens all the time, just get in your car and go home. At that time, I started recording the altercation only because I didn't know if the person would attack me or what would happen. I'm only about 5'3", he was about 6'3". I'm only about 120 pounds, he was about 300 pounds. And I didn't know if I would honestly make it home. And so after sharing the video, five other victims came forward that recognized the man from my video and stated they were also assaulted by the same man, which then prompted action from the city attorney's office. And the reason why I end up sharing the video is because my incident was one of the first ones I've ever seen that was just that horrific. And at that time, I heard there were thousands of attacks against the AAPI community, especially during the beginning of COVID. But I just never saw a video as horrific as what I encountered. And so I started advocating on behalf of other victims. And so I actually am an ambassador for LA County's LA vs. Hate Initiative, where I get to actually help other victims of hate, connect them to resources such as counseling, legal aid, and just lend them an ear for somebody that has gone through something similar. And a few months after my incident, I was invited to a free self-defense class, and I was honestly very skeptical, just because I didn't really know if self-defense could actually work. But after taking the class, I learned the groin kick, and I learned that could take out any man, woman, regardless of age, gender, size. It was all that is irrelevant. And so a few friends and I, which they're all sitting over there, we were actually strangers at the time, but we saw all these attacks targeting the seniors in the community. We saw our seniors be assaulted, be attacked, have acid thrown on them, have their faces slashed, be murdered, be robbed at gunpoint, and the list goes on and on. And we just couldn't stand there and watch what was happening to the community. And we wanted to find a way to give back to the community. And so in May of 2021, we started offering free self-defense classes. And honestly, we didn't know if anybody would actually come or not. But our first class had over 200 people in Westminster. And we saw that there was a need and a big demand for what was going on. And the general consensus of what we found was people were scared. They saw people that looked just like them get attacked, and we wanted to do something about it. And so in June, in this very city of 2021, Mr. Caesar Ichano, right here in Donabe Regional Park, was assaulted while he was with his wife walking around the park. And so we were in touch with Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, and we offered our second self-defense class in the park that had over 300 attendees. And so again, we saw a trend that the community wanted something that was tangible, to be able to protect and defend themselves. And so our classes are based on the non-invasive portion, which is situational awareness, just knowing who's around you, who's getting a little bit too close for comfort. Your bilingual language also says a lot to who's the target. And then also your voice, just by screaming, yelling, drawing attention, hopefully they'll deter the person from attacking you. And if, and only if they still want to attack you, no matter what, we also teach the invasive portion, which is the clinch elbow knee, and we also provide free pepper spray and safety alarm. And to this day, our organization is 100% volunteer-run. So I actually have just about 400 or 500 volunteers that come out to help the community. And we just actually hosted our 50th free self-defense class two weekends ago. And we have provided training to almost 10,000 members of the community through LA County and Orange County, and classes are 100% free. Right now, we actually partner with LA County, and we are working on a virtual training video that will be translated to Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, Korean, and various other languages, just so that way we can get the help and resources out to the community. And so this Saturday, we actually have a class in the city of Gardena. And so I would like to extend an invitation to each and every one of you here. If you're able to attend, it will be at 10:30 AM in the city of Gardena at the city hall line. And we just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity to continue serving the community. We have been to Cerritos to host three classes already for the residents of the city of Cerritos. And I could tell you that unfortunately, there is still a need and demand for these classes and these resources. And until these attacks stop, we're going to continue doing everything we can to try to protect our community. Thank you so much.
Wow. 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 So Ms. Hong Lee, thank you for celebrating AANHPI Heritage Month with us here in Cerritos, with your Seniors Fight Back, addressing this unfortunate need. And would you like to please call up members of your team and introduce them?
Yes, I actually have two of our original co-founders. If I could please have Dwi Nguyen and Eddie Liu. And I would also like to invite our other volunteers, if you can come up with us. S, Anna, Heather, Tim, Kevin. And from the city of Artisia, we have our volunteers as well. Councilmember Ramoso, and from Assemblymember Mira Sushi's office, we also have Eric.
Okay, so thank you, Ms. Lee. If I could have my council colleagues come up and join us, and let's take a photo with Ms. Hong Lee, President and co-founder of Seniors Fight Back and her team that's doing a fantastic job in the AANHPI community. Thank you. You almost forgot. This is the city of Cerritos proclamation for Asian American, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Here we go.
All pictures on three, please. One more, one more, and one more.
For the city, please. And for the city, just really quickly, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. You need some more, you need some more. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Don't leave, okay? Don't leave. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you again. Thank you. So now we're gonna take a photo with Ms. Lee and the City Council. Do we have room for all five?
I think we can do one room.
We can do one room.
Maybe just be on the side.
Yep, there you go. Here we go.
Beautiful. Pictures on three. One more, one more.
Three photos. One, two, one, one, two, two, one, two, three. Can we also do one of just council? Right now at this moment?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's your congratulations.
Thank you, Hong. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. It's great to hear your story. On this, on the bottom or up there? Bottom step, it's fine.
Go ahead. Pictures on three. Beautiful.
Three more. One, two, one, one, two, two, one, two, three.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, the City Council was just listening to Phil. Phil told us we needed to take that photo. So thank you, Phil. And who's the photographer over there? You're gonna help me get those photos for our city, right, Ms. Lee? Thank you. So. So I just want to say thank you again to Ms. Hong Lee, President and co-founder of Seniors Fight Back. This was a very meaningful presentation in honor of Asian American, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander Heritage Month, because us on the council, we experienced and dealt with the unfortunate racial hate crime against Caesar Ichano in our very own city of Cerritos, in our very own park. Thank you for responding to that and continuing to respond to this day. Thank you. Public comments? Thank you for your attendance at tonight's meeting. State law and our local rules do not support the use of profanity, hateful speech, or conduct that disrupts the conduct of this meeting. If necessary, I will issue an initial warning and call for a recess to restore order. After that, the chamber may be cleared if disruption continues. The following comments pertain to all public comments periods, all public comment periods on tonight's agenda. I will open public comments at the appropriate times on the agenda. Please be prepared, please be prepared to approach the podium and begin your comments at the time you are called. Public comments should be directed to the City Council and made only from the podium during your turn. Please respect each speaker and refrain from any disruptive behavior or speech during their comment time. Public, public comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Agenda item six, public comments should be limited to items on the consent calendar, closed session, and items not listed on the agenda but that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. The City Council received no written comments for item six. I will now open for public comments on this item. I see Mr. Japour at the podium, so I'll let you go first. Next time, check in, sir.
Okay, my name is Eugene Japour. As of this year, my family are 50-year residents of the city of Cerritos. I grew up here, went to high school here. And I pride myself on being a Filipino American whose father was in service in the US Navy and a veteran of Vietnam. The reason why I am up here speaking is in general to remind the council and to remind the city that in the next three years, three somewhat prominent and public events will be occurring and are hoping the city of Cerritos will take advantage of the exposure and the opportunities, both personal and business, that it can bring to our community. In 2026, it will be the 450th year anniversary of the founding of the United States. So my expectation as a member of community and being aware of what you've done in the past, I'm hoping that the next year's celebration will outdo quite a bit of what's happened before. Hopefully a drone show instead of fireworks. That's my suggestion. The second activity, which is in 2027, came about because Frank Yocama and I were both at events celebrating Star Wars there. Being fans of Star Wars, you know, we were at the same event. But I'm not sure if you're aware that every two years, Star Wars has what they call the Star Wars Celebration. They just completed the one in Japan, which was very successful. The next one is here in Los Angeles, most appropriately timed for the opening of the George Lucas Museum in Los Angeles. Also, it serves as the 50th anniversary of the debut of Star Wars. Now, we as a city are in close proximity to where the celebration is gonna take place. We're also equidistant, almost, sorta, to Disneyland, which means a lot of people. Maybe, if you're aware of the one in Anaheim, they estimate anywhere from 300,000 to 500,000 people, maybe, more or less. I may be wrong, but it's a very big deal. The one in Tokyo, Japan, was very successful. And we're looking for big things here for the city of, for Los Angeles celebration. And hopefully, we can take advantage of that since we are at a very good location. There will be shortage of rooms, there will be activities that people want to take advantage. So we could showcase our city and showcase our Hyatt Hotel to take advantage of that. And then finally, of course, we have the Olympics, which is 2028. Now, I'm gonna go back and mention Star Wars because if we do something to help promote our city and to take advantage of it, logistically, it could serve as a practice to what happened, will happen in 2028 when the Olympics come to Los Angeles. If you've been, if you remember the Los Angeles Olympics back, back in, what, 1984? Was the last time it was in Los Angeles? There's a lot of activity, and we're, and they're expecting even more so this year. So if the city of Cerritos plans to do something to celebrate the Olympics, maybe even host some of the Asian American teams that are out there, the Chinese, Taiwanese team, the Filipino team, the Vietnamese, the Korean, it would be a good opportunity for us to help promote. And also opportunity, as far as businesses, to show what Cerritos is made of. And of course, with that opportunity, it needs even more tax revenue for the city. So that's what it is, and that's what I propose. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Japour. Greta Manila? Is Greta Manila here? And we will be allowing public comment, but if you have an opportunity to check in, I could, I'll see your name as well.
Hi, good evening. My name is Greta. I've been a resident of Cerritos for about more than 40 years. And the reason I'm here is because I wanted to just address the issue with parking in my neighborhood. I live in Greystone in front of Carr High School. And my neighbors tend to be rotating, parking in front of my house, even though they have plenty of space parked in their house, you know? So I just wanted to know when the parking overnight will be reinforced, the 3 o'clock to AM to 6 AM? Because like what I said, it's been an ongoing issue. I really don't, I'm a busy person. I usually don't have time to go here. And I usually just call over the phone, but it's been an issue with me, and it's been bothersome. So that's why I'm here. And also, here's my husband, Elmer. You wanna talk about the drone?
Yeah, one of the other incidences that happened at our residence was we had a drone in our backyard. I didn't know who it was, but you know, after, you know, maybe about 30 minutes, I figured it was our next-door neighbor. I don't know what happened, but there was just one there, and then he was still flying another one. I don't know what the code is here, or like whether we can fly around drones. Are we okay with that, or should I be saying something?
It's a drone that broke, and it was in their backyard.
Yeah. So I don't know.
I don't know if they have cameras and stuff like that, so it's just privacy issue as well.
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna let you finish your public comment. Okay, yeah, I'm gonna let you finish your public comment before I say anything. Is there anything else you wanted to comment on?
That's pretty much it.
Okay, Darrell, can you see them in the back and talk to them, please, and get the information you need to get for the city?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. and Ms. Manila. Okay, next is Mel Cortez.
Thank you. Well, you get the graph I made regarding home burglaries. My name is Mel Cortez, Cerritos resident. And I was here in, I think, February. We graphed with the red area, and in January, we had 28 home break-ins. And I did compare all the cities. We had 28, and Artesia had four. I mean, everybody else had in the neighborhood, neighborhood cities had less than six. A few weeks later, in April, and the sheriff, Neighborhood Watch, and the city council help and safety office, Cerritos had five home break-ins in April. Five, that's the least I've seen in many, many years. Some of you have seen me here year after year, coming back. And the least I've seen in the past is 10. And going from 28 in January to five in April, it's really great for the city, great for the sheriff that's helping, for Neighborhood Watch, and for everyone that's been helping out to keep all these criminals away. And we know it's not over. You see right here, the great thing is that it's not that we just went down. Now we even have less than some cities in the area. The other cities, they're about the same. And we went down about 82%. So that's great. And we know they're having attempts, but the residents have stopped the people. So they're still gonna try to come. So just residents, don't leave your car down. Just keep our eyes open to keep it at, let's challenge ourselves, less than five for the month of May. I think so far, it's zero for the first six days. So I don't have all the correct stats all the time because I get them from crime mapping. So far, it looks good. One thing I would like to see if the city council could do is maybe our safety manager could do a quick, maybe a two-minute recap of the crime in Cerritos council meetings. It would be really good because we could hear it. They can do it. I don't mind coming back every council meeting just to repeat what I have right here. The other point I want to make right now is the missing statues. I know there have been several statues from the public art stolen. The one near my home on Artesia and Greeley has been missing for a while. I think that's number 23, Funny Papers. And today, I found out the one on Carmenita, number 19, Fiesta, is gone. So that's gonna keep happening. Is there a way, and I think in the past we talked, to start moving all those statues and public places over here for safety? And the statue art right here in the city hall? Because if not, in 20 years, all the statues and public places around the city are gonna be gone. So I'm not sure what the city is doing to try to keep them safe. And several months ago, I came and I asked if the statues here at City Hall and the statues around the city could have a QR code. So when we go, I know where to find information, but people walk by, there's a QR code. We could just open the page for public artwork site, the website, to find out the name of the statue and what it means and how long it's been there and information. So a QR code will help to find out what we're looking at. So I think I did speak about this a few months ago. And I'm not sure if it happened or not, but it's still something that would be a good idea for residents and for people that walk by in the city. That's all I had to say. Thank you, and thank you, Sheriff, Captain Strong, and you, Sheriff, for all the help that you've just given to the city to keep crime down. Thank you.
Joan Pileman?
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Joan Pileman, Cerritos resident for too many years now, since 1975. I have a document here with me this evening. It's dated June 8, 2020. And this document is 30 pages long. I brought three pages with me. And it's the agreement that this city and its city council made with the cities of La Palma, Lakewood, and Cypress to jointly build a new bridge over Coyote Creek at Delamo, which turns into La Palma because of the Orange County lines and the LA County lines. I spoke in front of the council about three years ago, and I asked the council and whoever is in charge of this project to make a quarterly report to the city and to the residents that are impacted by the bottleneck where the four lanes going eastbound and westbound go down into two lanes across the creek. Okay? Former Congresswoman Michelle Steele was behind this project, and she was getting $5 million to help fund it. It was a trailer on some other piece of legislation which got cut, to my understanding. They, we had about three years ago, an open house at the Cerritos Senior Center, and it had about 10 storyboards around the auditorium in there with the architects and the engineers and the artist renderings of what the project might look like. A little description from the document of 2020. "The existing bridge carries over 21,000 vehicles per day." That's 2019, 2020. We're now 2025, five years later. I would say that traffic has doubled. I get blocked in my tract. I live on the east side of the creek. The entryway to my tract is immediately over the bridge, turning left, going north on Mammoth. The next entrance into the subdivisions are at Denny. And I never thought I would thank the people in Orange County for putting in a signal at Denny and Moody. It is a godsend because it stops the traffic back at Denny, the westbound traffic, so we can get out of our tract and turn right or left. The hours that the congestion is horrendous is between 4:30 in the afternoon and 7 o'clock. And this is a dangerous situation. How are first responders going to get over that bridge when it's backed up both ways, east and west? The four cities involved gave Cerritos the wherewithal or they put you in charge of this bridge project. And they have committed some funds to it, but city of Cerritos has got to find the rest of it or else go back to those other cities and entities and try and get the money that we need to widen that bridge as soon as possible. If you have never seen the bottleneck on the east, southeast side of the city, I suggest that you come and sit in one of the tree-lined parks over there and watch the traffic flow or not flow. Thank you very much. If you would like to have a copy of this document, I'd be glad to share it with you. Somewhere, the storyboards are sitting on a shelf gathering dust, and you should be reviewing them. And I will be back in every quarter to see what the progress is toward funding this project. That's way, way overdue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pileman. And yes, I do know, I do know that you come in here and speak about the Delamo Bridge project. And my council colleagues, specifically Mayor Protem Linda Johnson and I have advocated for the Delamo Bridge project in former Congressmember Michelle Steele's office in Washington, DC with her staff. And I did advocate for more funding from Congressmember Derek Tran for the Delamo Bridge project in March in Washington, DC in his office. And coincidentally, thank you for bringing it up because coincidentally, I was in Congressmember Derek Tran's Washington, DC office yesterday talking to his chief of staff, Dow Nguyen, and his senior legislative assistant, Tony Tran, about our need for funding, more federal funding for this project. So thank you for your very timely comment. City manager, can you please give a short update about the status of the Delamo Bridge project?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The resident, the speaker, did participate in a public participation gathering of information process as part of our environmental review of the project. That major milestone was achieved. The city council did certify the environmental document now a couple of years ago. As was mentioned, we have sought funding from federal sources, and we're actively seeking funding as well from state sources to the extent that they can assist. We're looking for ways to get the amount of dollars needed for a project that's, in current estimates, at about $30 million plus to complete. We are also simultaneously with some grant funding from Metro, both LA County Metro and OCTA are completing the design of the project. At the time of the environmental phase, the project was at a preliminary design phase. We're now completing actual final engineering design so that when the funding is ready, the project can be, excuse me, when the project is funded, the project can be shovel-ready and ready to start.
Thank you, city manager. And but I agree with Mrs. Pileman that given the importance of this Delamo Bridge project to our city, to our residents, to visitors to Cerritos, and also to the other three cities, Lakewood, La Palma, and Cypress, I'd ask for consensus from my colleagues that we agendize, we agendize the Delamo Bridge project so that we can have a robust discussion about it as a city council. We could have, we can invite public comment about it, and we can get a more detailed, more detailed information about the Delamo Bridge project, including the timeline, the updated timeline for the project.
I concur.
I concur.
I concur too.
Okay, so let's agendize that, okay? City manager? Brandon Lane?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor Protem and City Council. My name is Brandon Lane, and I serve as Vice President of Government Affairs for Athens Services. Tonight, I wanted to provide just a quick update. As you know, in February, the city granted an extension on the Athens Services contract as the hauler and service provider in the city of Cerritos. May 1 was the first billing cycle of the new rate structure that was put into place by the council under in order to make the city compliance with state mandates of SB 1383. We have been working very closely with the city. I know the city has received some phone calls and questions regarding rates and the new structure that was put together. We have been receiving phone calls as well. When we first started this project, we have a team of recycling coordinators that spent about five weeks out in the field knocking on every single commercial door in the city of Cerritos. And we tried to meet with as many as we can, and we actually met with about 55% of your commercial customers. We were unable to get to all of them, although we did communicate with them via email if we had it on file, via phone if we had it on file, and letters sent to the business owners and the address on file. That being said, we still get questions. It doesn't matter how much communication we have. People still want to talk about it. And so we have set up a process with Mr. Papa and his team in Public Works. When they receive a question, an email, a phone call, somebody coming into City Hall, he sends that over to my team, a gentleman by the name of Albert Gim, who is a supervisor for our recycling coordinators. They reach out to the customers. They have a conversation with them, and typically, they are able to resolve any type of question, issue, concern. If that doesn't happen, Albert and his team will then forward that and escalate it up to myself, and I will reach out personally to that business. And so we are working very closely with your staff. We are working very closely with the businesses in the city of Cerritos. And I just wanted to provide you with that update to know that when you receive a question, a call, or an email, do know that we are making a priority to make sure that we are talking with every single customer that has a question or concern, and we will work with them until their concern is resolved. And that is really the update I had for this evening. Just wanted to make sure you were aware of that. We greatly appreciate your staff's time working with us and putting this process into place, and we will continue being here to answer any questions that your, that your community, your businesses have. So thank you very much for your time, and have a wonderful evening.
Hold on, Brandon.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for updating us. Did any of my colleagues have a question? Thank you, Brandon, for giving us an update from Athens. If a resident or a business, a Cerritos resident or a Cerritos business has a question, what number should they call?
You know, I knew you were gonna ask me that. And if any of my bosses are watching this right now, they're gonna be disappointed in the fact that I cannot remember that phone number. But if you go to athens.com on the website, it will be there. There's a phone number, customer care number. And we actually have it set up within our customer care that we have Cerritos right now because of the new implementation of this program. When they call into customer service and they identify that they're with Cerritos, they will also take their information. They will forward it over to Albert Gim's team because we have specific recycling coordinators that have met with, we broke up the city, and they basically go out and meet with customers. And we know who reached out to them or who talked with them. And so customer service will then take that information, send it over to Albert's team. They'll send the person who's handling that account, and they'll send them out. And again, we'll go back through that same process.
Yeah, and this is timely because I know that the city council and city hall are getting questions because of the implementation effective May 1? And your information, athens.com?
Yes, sir.
And then that's actually better because that's athensservices.com?
Athensservices.com.
Athensservices.com, that's great because that's 24/7/365. So...
It is, yeah, that's, yeah, sorry, yes, sir. That is 24/7/365. I was thinking about customer service. But the numbers, the number will be on that website, and the times will be on that website. And if you reach out, we will make sure that we reach out to those customers and we talk with the customers. And again, if any of you receive phone calls, emails, questions, we have that process set up with Albert, and we'll make sure that we are, sorry, Alvin, and we will make sure that we reach out and connect with all of the customers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I make a comment concerning Athens? Real quick, that's relevant to what you just said about contacting them?
Okay. Eugene, you're going to check in for a, another public comment, so you'll check in for this and state your name. Right there at the microphone, podium, just state your name and your, your address, and let's, and let's hear from you, Eugene.
And you already know who I am because I announced it in another public comment. As regards to the service of Athens, based on personal experience, based on my work experience, since I used to work in customer care, their service, their customer care department is exceptional. They have never kept me waiting, or waiting is just a short time. They're easy to talk to. They try to meet my needs as best as possible. And whether it's through Yelp or whether accessing Athens.com, you could easily find their phone number. It's an 888 number. It has a menu, but it directs you to the proper things as long as you put in the input. And I've dealt with them in the last couple of months about five times doing, using, I've been to hall stuff, and their service is 100%. And this is not based on a customer standpoint, but based on the employment standpoint, since I have had 30 years of customer service experience working at a call center. So, thank you, Athens.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Japour.
If I could real quickly, the number is 888-336-6100. So, that's the customer service number and AthensServices.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brandon. Are there any other speakers for public comments? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. The next item is the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve or a request to remove anything from the consent calendar?
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Councilmember Polito, a second by Councilmember Say. Can we please vote on the screen? It was moved by Polito and seconded by Say.
And the motion passes on a vote of 5 to 0.
There are no public hearings on tonight's meeting agenda. So, we'll move to Item 9A, Advisory Board, Advisory Board Appointments. The next item is 9A, City Manager. Do we have a report on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. An overview of this item will be provided by City Clerk Sunny Nava.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, the item before you is consideration of City Council nominations for resident appointment for service on the city's commissions and committees or advisory boards. The advisory boards apprise the City Council on various subject matters within the city's jurisdiction and serve as liaisons to the community. The city's current advisory boards include the Fine Arts and Historical Commission, the Parks and Recreation Commission, the Planning Commission, Property Preservation Commission, Community Safety Committee, and the Let Freedom Ring Committee, with a total of 40 member positions. Terms for those appointed for the prior term ended March 31st. However, pursuant to the Cerritos Municipal Code, each of these members may serve for an additional period of up to 90 days or until June 29th, or until, until their successors are appointed. Appointments to advisory boards may be made by the City Council members and authorized by majority council approval at a noticed public meeting until all positions are filled for this term. Applications will be accepted by the Office of the City Clerk on an ongoing basis until all positions are filled. Applications are currently available on the city's website and in the City Clerk's office. At this time, it is recommended the City Council review and consider the information presented in this report, open public comment, and nominate individuals from the eligible pool of applicants to serve two-year terms for each advisory board, subject to the city charter anti-nepotism law and majority approval of the City Council, defer nominations to a future meeting date, or provide alternate direction. For appointments made this evening to any appointees in attendance, I may, I can administer the oath of office at the appropriate time. Our office will coordinate with members appointed this evening not in attendance to administer the oath at another time. This concludes my report, and the City Manager and I are available to answer any questions the City Council may have.
Thank you for the report. Do we have any questions from the Council? I will now open for public comments on this item. Are there any public comments? Seeing none. Are there any other speakers on this item? I will close the public comment period. Does the City Council have any nominations for appointment this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I have an appointment to make this evening.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Yes, I'd like to reappoint my Planning Commissioner Deepak Javeri. He is not here tonight, and he will make arrangements to take the oath of office with the City Clerk.
Do I have a second? It was moved by Mayor Pro Tem Johnson and seconded by Sophia. Could we vote on the screen, please?
And the motion passes on a vote of 5 to 0.
Does the City Council have any other, does, does any, does any of the other council members have any nominations for appointment this evening? Okay, seeing no other nominations, we'll move on. Item 9B, informational report. Could we please go back to Item 9A? Is that okay? Okay, we'll go back to Item 9A. I, I have a motion. Attached to the agenda report is Exhibit 2, the City of Cerritos list of elected and appointed officials. I would like to make a motion to make a change to that. Under the mayoral appointments, under the internal ad hoc working groups, I would like to appoint, make my appointments to the Personnel Group, Linda Johnson and Mark Polito. And I would like to make my, my appointments to the Public Safety Group, Public Safety Group, Jennifer Hong and Sophia Say.
Second.
It was moved by myself and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Johnson. Can we please vote on the screen?
Motion passes on a vote of 5 to 0.
Item 9B, informational report, hiring data. The next item on the agenda is 9B, City Manager. Do we have a report on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Item 9B is a report that is intended to comply with a new state law with respect to providing information on employee data, particularly with hiring. The overview and the presentation this evening will be given by Director of Administrative Services Drew Schneider, together with Human Resources Manager Amy Thomas. They'll begin the item with a brief video, and then we'll have additional information to share. Following the conclusion of the public comments and discussion on this item, I'd like to conclude this item with a brief announcement. Thank you.
My name is Kriya Tinker, and I'm the children's librarian at the Cerritos Library. I believe that the city of Cerritos is an exceptional place to work because they afford you with so many wonderful opportunities for growth and for learning. And really, it's a great place just to serve the public. To see so many people who are like-minded, who are hard workers, who are dedicated, just want the best for the public. It's just fantastic to come in, and people are so positive and ready to work, and ready to just do the best they can do every day. I am very fortunate to have 19 years here, and I'm looking forward to more.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. It is a true pleasure to appear before you tonight to deliver this report. This report summarizes a year's worth of action by our human resources team to fundamentally change our hiring processes, to expedite the process, improve customer service, and deliver truly outstanding human capital to make our city great. So, just a brief overview of the law. Assembly Bill 2561 must be presented prior to budget adoption. We chose to present tonight to give you plenty of time to analyze this information prior to adoption on June 26th. The goal of the law is promote overall transparency in public sector employment practices. There's a couple of key points in law I do want to point out, and we have chosen to exceed these requirements here tonight. So, if a public agency exceeds a 25% full-time vacancy rate, it must report the following items. It must report the number of vacant full-time representative positions, the average days between posting and filling a position, the average number of applicants per representative position, and opportunities to improve compensation or working conditions, or changes to policies or recruitment activities that may hinder our hiring. It also provides the union opportunity to provide their own feedback and perspective on these issues. We are joined by members of our union here tonight that will speak following this presentation. Just a quick profile. We currently have 14 vacant representative positions. I'd like to note that eight of these are currently out on the street and are open for internal recruitments at this very moment. This is a representation of the 147 overall representative positions we have in the city for full-time. This means we have a vacancy rate of less than 9.5%. I have to tell you, this number is truly, and I don't mean to tout our own success here, but this number is very low in overall public sector employment. It's well below the 20% threshold provided by the law, well below industry benchmarks, and really is a product of incredible partnerships, both with our labor groups and the men and women at this table here with me tonight, who have prioritized hiring, making sure that we have the best and brightest minds available to serve our residents. Out of an interest in transparency, we are going to provide some additional metrics, even though they're not required by the law because we do not exceed that 20% ratio. The average time to hire is now down to 53.98 days. This is reduced from 88.1 days in the previous fiscal year. This is a 40% improvement in our hiring efficiency. This is due to looking at every step of the process and looking where we can make this process as efficient as possible, will continue to deliver outstanding customer service for both our internal and external clients. The average number of applicants we have positioned is 34.39. This is particularly poignant concerning the fact that vast majority of our positions are filled by internal candidates, which have a limited hiring pool from which to apply. Many of our positions, we are now having to cap on the number of applicants because we are receiving 150 or more applications per position. Truly, this represents an outstanding amount of interest in working here in Cerritos. And much of that is thanks to the hard work of the City Council as well, making this a very attractive city. It also reflects our commitment to succession plan, management, and employee development. So, here I will highlight a few of those changes that we have made in order to position the city to be the employer of choice. In recruitment and hiring policies, we have standardized selection procedures and onboarding steps. We have reduced inconsistencies and any possible delay in the process. We have a robust compensation policy that was recently met and conferred upon and approved by the union and by the City Manager. This item is implemented in a structured and equitable pay practice to ensure that we have pay equity for both internal and external candidates alongside aftergoal for the city. It also includes a compensation rubric to ensure the consistent salary placement for all individuals. This is also a product of a recently completed citywide desk audit, in which we have updated all full-time classifications, we've realigned roles to meet our operational needs, and we've improved competitive positioning by looking at both internal and external equity in the process. Further, we streamline the hiring process, interviewing, scheduling. All of our, for the vast majority of our positions, we post the interview date on the job announcement. Every applicant knows when the interviews will be for that position so they can, so they can plan accordingly. This allows us to have interviews as soon as a week after the position closes. We're also continuously scoring those applications as they come in to ensure that the day that position closes, we can go ahead and reach out to potential candidates. We have pre-identified interview panels. We're not scouring at the last minute to figure out how do we find the appropriate folks to send this panel. We know when the position's posted, who is going to be on that panel. We've reduced the number of second-round interviews. While this may seem like a small measure, second-round interviews add up to a month to the hiring process, and this very competitive environment, that month can make a world of difference. We do continue to use second-round interviews in limited circumstances when necessary. As I mentioned before, we have also introduced a standard compensation rubric. This reduces our ad hoc negotiations. We have evaluated a fair market position for all of our positions and are able to make a competitive offer to employees based upon their experience and their education and other specialty skills. This ensures an equity both internally and externally, and speeds up that offer process. We've also established for the first time minimum qualifications and scoring rubrics for our positions. I want to speak very briefly here about partnership and communication. The relationship that the city has with our union has never been stronger, and I think that they will echo those comments tonight. We have been able to move forward with many of these initiatives while making important changes and updates to our classifications because of that trust that we have built across what can otherwise be contentious divide. Our internal communications, we provide a weekly brief to all of our executive management team on the status of our recruitments, so that way they know where each position is at. We've also improved and overall enhanced coordination throughout the city, particularly where we have citywide positions. And as the video recently shown, we have made a robust effort to improve our recruitment through our videos and social media activities. Video show tonight is a, and Scott will probably could describe this better than I, but through our communications team, they have taken our long-form video and broken it out into various short-form, social media-ready, vertical panels, highlighting many of our different employees throughout the city, talking about the diversity of opportunities with the city and the value proposition of coming here. This is thanks to the incredible work of our communications team, and it's truly that the whole team has come together to make that happen. We've also significantly increased our social media activity to put Cerritos on the map as that employer of choice. Recently, the City Council passed an update to our memorandum of understanding with AFSMI. There's a couple of key points in there that have particularly made us that employer of choice. We now have a predictable cost of living adjustment that's tied to CPI. This has strengthened our long-term salary competitiveness, ensures that we keep up with the times, and that we are responsive to market demands. We are also in the process of implementing a 980 alternative work schedule. We're one of, we were one of the last remaining cities to not have this in place. I'm excited to announce tonight that the pilot phase for that study will start on Monday with two of our divisions. Believe me, the employees are equally excited, and many others at this table are excited to follow in short order. This will improve overall work-life balance while ensuring we maintain a high level of customer service that our residents expect and deserve. It also makes sure that we are an attractive city for potential candidates and retains our current talent, current very talented workforce. And we've increased additional flexibility on our leave system. Previously, there were restrictions on how things like kin care and other things have been used, or could be used. We want to make sure that this is a workplace for all, for all individuals, regardless of what is going on at home, that they're able to take care of their business here at work and their business at home, so that way they can come to work with worry-free. This concludes my presentation. Ms. Thomas, Mr. Lopez, and I are available to answer any questions you may have. We also need to afford some time for the union to give their remarks as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Drew Schneider. When is the union going to give their remarks? Now?
So, defer to the City Manager, I'm sorry. It'll be your preference, Mayor, if you'd like to have them join in our public comments, or we can, if you'd like to give them the floor first at this time prior to any discussion.
Let's give Rogan the floor first.
Good evening. My name is Rogan Gerard. I am the union president for AFSMI Local 619. I'm also a 30, 30-year employee for the city of Cerritos, proud employee. Very pleased to see this new council and excited for the opportunities in the future that the city is going to bring. I also want to acknowledge what Drew was mentioning earlier. We are at an all-time high between the work that Drew and Robert Lopez has put in, as well as Amy Thomas has put in. We are at all-time high of improved communication and trust between the union and the city. And I think that's, should be applauded and thought of when it comes to the City Manager and what the team has done to really improve it. So, I'm very pleased that we're at this place right now. I do have some comments that I'll make, and then at the end, I'll also be available for questions. I also am joined tonight with two of our board members. We have Matthew Adams in the back, and we also have Al McGriffen as well in the back. So, if the, we delve, if you have a question that delves into an area they might be better suited for, I'll call them up to be able to answer any questions you may have. suited for, I'll call them up to be able to answer any questions you may have. What I want to start with is recognizing the tremendous work under the leadership of Robert Lopez and the HR team. They have worked tirelessly. I will go back even further. They started working very long and hard hours, leading into COVID. It really hasn't stopped. In fact, if anything, it's been accelerated in the last year, two years. There have, as Drew pointed out in his presentation, there's been a lot of turnover in the city. There's been a lot of promotions in the city. And they have had to field that and carry a very heavy load. I'm going to start off with my positive remarks in the beginning, but I want to recognize the hard work that they've put in, and I want to go into some of the problems I see as well. One, in the HR department, currently, they have dual tasks. One of their tasks is, of course, recruiting and hiring, and working on job descriptions and improving, and updating them. They also have payroll underneath them. Previously, if you go back maybe 12, 13 years ago, payroll used to be under finance, and that's where it had been since I first started, and it was moved under HR. With the amount of work and efforts that HR is going through, and how much work they're putting in, I don't believe, personally, the union does not believe that's a core function, that that ought to be transitioned at some point back into finance, so they can solely focus in on hiring and recruitment and serving the wonderful city of Cerritos employees. I also believe that they are understaffed. The amount of workload that goes through, and I don't even know half of it, but I'm close to it, the amount of workload that goes through their department is tremendous. And I know they're putting in long hours and working very hard in a stressful situation. There are other departments, not here to talk about other departments, that are in similar circumstances, but in particular in HR, since we're talking about hiring, they could use the support of additional staff. Going into some of the hiring practices, hiring times have improved quite a bit, but there are still plenty of positions in the part-time sector that haven't been able to be filled. There's only so many hours in the day and only so much staff in that department, and as hard as they work, there are positions that have been vacant for months and months and months, key positions. That's why I bring up focusing their efforts more in recruitment by adding staff and/or moving payroll back into finance. I want to delve a little bit into CalPERS and part-time employees. So many of you may know this, some of you may not, and forgive me if I give you a little bit too much of an explanation, or not enough. In our city, and in many cities, we are all CalPERS employees retirement system, except for part-timers when they first start. If you work over 1,000 hours, you move from the government, federal government retirement system into a California program. So what the city has adopted in the past is limiting the number of people that get into CalPERS. That, at times, probably when you look at numbers, can make some sense. You're looking at the increased costs of having a part-time employee go into CalPERS. That costs more. But what we currently see, and we see every time this year at the end of fiscal year, is departments starting to lose their most talented and capable part-time staff. They're losing them because they're getting to their 960-hour mark, and the city has chosen to take them off the schedule until the next fiscal year. That has had, has created challenges for some departments, in particular in recreation. I've been told, we don't know, we don't know the specific numbers, but we believe there's around 12 that are now being, their hours are being curtailed and pulled back. And I think it sends the wrong message to our most dedicated workforce that always makes themselves available to work for the city of Cerritos, that near the end of the year, that their hours are being cut back just so that they are not given the, afforded the opportunity to get in a better retirement system. These are our most talented and skilled part-time employees, and the city of Cerritos, the city of Cerritos perhaps has a higher level of part-time staff to full-time staff. Recreation in particular, at the Performing Arts Center, at the library, at the senior center, they don't run without this, without qualified part-time staff. So with this being said, I would urge the city council and the city manager to consider promoting and allowing critical positions that need to be filled with the most talented people, allow them to continue to work. That's all these staff are asking for, is to be able to continue to work for the great city of Cerritos. Some other areas, I already touched on a little bit, but mentioning work turnaround when it comes to how it's taking to fill positions. Again, that's, it's, is, as, I think Drew is correct, they should be applauded for the efforts they put in and how much they've improved it. It's tremendous. And what he didn't mention is that along this process, the workload has increased because they're oftentimes reviewing job descriptions, revising job descriptions. So in years past, it was just the same job description. So the fact that they are improving their times and increasing their workload, I think that is a positive testament. But that being said, it's still, it's still taking too long. It needs, there needs to be quicker turnaround. And I've already mentioned what, at least some of the suggestions that I think the union has for that. There's one other area having to do with succession planning. I think the city council should authorize the city manager to be able to hire, hire a replacement for a position that is going to become vacant in circumstances that the city manager deems, so that you can have training. I'll give you, for instance, you have an employee that has a lot of knowledge, and there's not a lot of other people that have that knowledge. It would be useful if a city employee were to announce a retirement date or date they're leaving, that the city manager would be authorized to recruit that position prior to the employee leaving, perhaps even months in advance, so that the existing employee in that position can help train that person, bring them up to speed. Oftentimes, you have to wait until somebody has left, and then you have to hire them. But that knowledge may have just walked out the door. So I think that would be a value as well, to help with succession planning, allow a transition period of time to hire replacements while the employee is still active in the Let me just check my notes, see if I missed anything. I think that's it. The other solution with the part-time situation would be to hire more full-time staff through the city. There, we always are having recruitment problems at the pool, highly sought-after positions, and most cities have problems filling them. There are definitely areas where you could have more full-time staff, or allow your part-time staff to work more hours. I know there is, the city has been very thoughtful in putting together, putting together surveys and hiring consultants and looking more detailed into the city structure. But I also don't want to, if that is something that occurs, I also don't want there to be measures moving. So for instance, if a deeper study is going to be looked at, or more thought is going to be put into CalPERS part-time employees, the departments need their help now. If it's a year from now, before anything's thought of, that makes it more challenging in the short term. So I would hope that there could be some quicker action in those areas. With that being said, I think that kind of concludes what I have to say. I want to do mention again, the city of Cerritos is doing much better in my career here. We are hiring quicker, we're smarter about what we're doing, and we are, and just in the last year or two, and I've seen a lot of improvements. So the criticism I'm giving would have been much greater two years, three years ago. So I think it should be applauded, the work and efforts that the team has put in for this. I'm available for any questions you may have, along with the rest of my team, if you have any questions for myself or the HR team. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Rogan. And, you know, I'm glad you did your report now, but you'll have opportunity to say more if you feel the need to, okay?
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
I have a question.
For Rogan?
Well, for anybody. If we are limited to allowing part-time staff to go over and beyond the hours that they are not able to go over, what are we doing then as a city to fill, to fill that position?
I can answer from my, in the past, we have had to curtail services, or we are having less experienced staff try to step in to support, support what's going on. I've been told, for instance, in the recreation department, there are staff that have other responsibilities, they stop those responsibilities and start filling in for vacancy positions, so they're not able to do the work that they were intended to do to fill in for key areas. In, in a, in a small way at times, it's not as severe, but at the Performing Arts Center, we have had to augment with outside contractors to fill ones when we have lost staff at the end of the season. That has also happened as well. But right now, I've been told in most departments in the city that they're shortening people's hours, they're cutting back on their hours, they haven't, my feedback is they have not impacted directly services at the moment, but there's still a couple of months left.
If I may add to Rogan's response, from the city's perspective, one of the changes we've made in this year's budget model, that you may have noticed in your books this week, is we're moving from designated number of part-time positions, rather we're calculating based upon the number of hours for full-time equivalents. This seems a little bit like finance mumbo jumbo, but the practical reality of this, it gives the departments a whole lot more flexibility in how they want to use their part-time staff dollars. So if they want to hire additional folks in order to be able to address that 960 limit, they're able to do so, they're not limited to a particular headcount, they're limited to a budget line instead. So there's a lot more flexibility for the departments to give them different options on how they want to approach it. I will also mention, and, you know, I'm certainly sympathetic to, and I'm incredibly appreciative of all the kind words that Rogan just shared, there are some challenges with the 960 scenario. To give a little bit of context for the council on this, 960 is a limit that we use to prevent folks from automatically entering into a CalPERS retirement system. And that CalPERS retirement system has a couple of different trigger points for us. One, per the conditions of our MOU, makes them eligible for an additional medical benefit of $700 per month. It also triggers additional CalPERS-related expenses for the city, not only for that employee in that immediate period, does allow them to buy back previous time, which contributes to our unfunded liability numbers. And one of the particular aspects that may be a little bit counterintuitive for some of us, is that once an individual becomes a CalPERS member, they're always a CalPERS member. And so that means someone who may be in one assignment, say at the pool, where we've determined that it's necessary for us to move them beyond that 960 limit and make them a quote-unquote PERS part-timer, when they move on to their additional positions throughout the city, because many of our folks, including our own budget manager and our innovation technology manager, our former rec leaders, and I think our city clerk, we, it's a proud jumping-off point, but they carry that PERS membership regardless of which additional positions they carry forward. So it's very hard for us to truly calculate the full financial impacts of that move, and so that's why we're limiting it. One of the other items I'll address in that particular matter is, under the city manager's direction and as part of the strategic planning process, we are going to complete a part-time staffing study that'll allow us to look systematically across the entire organization and determine what positions needed truly it is in the city's interest to make PERS part-time positions. Historically, this was done on a more ad hoc basis, based upon the limited situation in front of us. We want to look at this comprehensively and strategically throughout the city. As you're aware, as the next item we were going to go over in a few minutes in the budget, we are budget constrained, and we need to be mindful about how we're using those dollars. We want to make sure that we are being good fiscal stewards of the taxpayers' dollars here in Cerritos. So it is a careful balance. We are very mindful that the impacts, the 960-hour limit does have our employees. The conversations we've had with our CDR leadership team on a consistent basis is to monitor those numbers throughout the year, so we're not having to curtail at the end of the year. But there are occasionally times where that does come up, and we try to address that as quickly as possible, and try to avoid it whenever possible. Ms. Thomas, anything you want to add?
So, oh, so just to follow up.
Go ahead.
So just to follow up then, as you said regarding the part-time staff, a lot more flexibility by the department managers. However, though, is that going to help mitigate so that we would not have to go out to subcontract? Personally, I'm not about subcontracting. I like to use in-house staff rather than subcontracting.
It does give the departments a lot more flexibility in terms of total headcount, that they want to make, they may want to have more individuals who work 10 hours a week instead of a fewer number of individuals working 20 hours a week for the same amount of overall cost in the city's budget. So it gives them a little bit more flexibility, allows them to stay well under that 960-hour limit.
And real quick, one last question, Mr. Mayor. A few years back, I've asked this question, and Rogan brings it up. I thought we've already moved payroll under finance. You know, I had talked about this with our previous city manager. Do we still have payroll under human resources?
Yeah, thank you if I can answer that question. So upon entering into the role of city manager, I did look at that issue among several issues. At this point, I made the determination for that function to remain within the human resource division. It is something that we continue to evaluate. We have done additional adjustments within the administrative services department as a whole. So some functions that were previously in the human resources division have moved to other areas of the department as a way of addressing some of those workload issues that were touched upon. It is something that we continue to evaluate, and if necessary, can make adjustments over time.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just add one more comment to Drew's comment. I often use the phrase, there are higher costs with having CalPERS part-timers. What are the costs in not having them ought to be considered, too? And I say that, as Drew alluded to, flexibility to hire more staff. If you hire more staff that work less hours, they're just not going to be dedicated to the city of Cerritos. They're not going to make this their primary focus, and you're going to have a lot of turnover. How much does it cost to keep rehiring staff? The endless, again, more work for HR. I'm sure they'd like to hire everybody and have nobody leave, if they could have it that way. But that churn level needs to be considered as well. How much time do we spend training? I know in some facilities, many thousands of dollars are spent training staff that then, six months later, find themselves leaving. So I think a bigger picture needs to be considered, not just that part-time staff that go into PERS are more expensive. What are the costs in not doing that? And where's the balance point? I don't think every staff, every part-time staff member ought to be put into CalPERS, but I also don't think no staff member should be put into CalPERS. So thank you. If you have any other questions, otherwise, thank you very much for this opportunity, and available if you have any other questions.
Alma, did you want to say something?
Rogan pretty much touched the base. I mean, when I first started at the theater, we had a challenge.
Why don't you come on up? Because I saw you raise your, I saw you raise your hand, so.
Remember microphones?
Yeah. I saw you raise your hand, Alma.
I did.
That's what happens when you raise your hand.
Yes. I was gonna say that pretty much Rogan did touch what I was gonna say, Alma. When I first started at theater, we had a list of over, almost 100 people, and they would come in and work, and they all had knowledge of the theater. Of course, our theater is rather unique to other theaters in the United States. And we have people like Matthew run out of hours, and he's a skilled, very skilled person in his audio department, and trying to train somebody to have them catch up to our speed. And when I first came into the custodian department during COVID, Sylvia asked us to slow down, and Carrie Dowling put it the best way, we're so used to working underhanded, less people, that we have a schedule to keep, and we're like, load in, nine to 11, sound check, 12 to 2, and cleanups. And if we have changes on the stage, they were always like this, working, 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 working. So then we came into the custodian department, they asked us to slow down, but we're like, we can't. So then we came into the custodian department, they asked us to slow down, but we're like, we can't, we don't know how. Even now, I'm, I'm in the department, and they're like, Sylvia's like, yeah, you get done too fast. I'm like, I'm sorry, I'm still theater trained. Just get it done, because we don't have enough people to do it. So we have to hurry up and get it done. And if we had a little bit more of a crew, if we had some of the ones that could stay there, because we're, they're usually done by January, February, and then we're struggling to work for those bodies that we're missing. And having to config, doing the configs, it's, it's very hard to do with less than 20 people. I mean, there's still the the tower, the pro tower, I think is the one of the towers we're still physically having to push. And you've got four people on the corners, on the floor, watching. You've got three in the front, three in the back, and three on the sides. You've got all these people, and then you've got people up high watching everything, and you need the people that have the knowledge. And we're losing those people with that knowledge, we're struggling to get that done. That's all I was gonna say.
Thank you. See, she certainly has a soft spot for the Performing Arts Center.
Okay, thank you, Rogan. I'm gonna see, I'm gonna ask my council colleagues if they have any questions. So I'll start with Councilmember Say, do you have any questions?
When I studied that, I know we're not getting to the point yet, the budget report. As far as I know, in general speaking, I'm talking about running a company, you must have some part-time person to back up. Because part-time person, you can manipulate in it, when it's in need, you can increase the hour there. For part-time person, as far as I was told, there's no CalPERS, do we? Is that right? Part-time staff.
I'm sorry, ma'am, the question at the hand is.
The part-time staff, can they have the CalPERS?
So some of, some of our part-timers are enrolled in CalPERS, others are not. So those who are work, are limited to 960 hours per fiscal year, are not enrolled in CalPERS. But we do have some number of part-time staff who are enrolled in PERS.
That's a state law for that?
And then they, they have worked more hours within a particular year.
More hours. When you say more hours, more than 20 hours?
Generally speaking, yes, more than 20.
So somebody's monitored the hours in there?
We do, we do our, with our, with the help of our HR team, and we do have our managers monitor hours every pay period.
Because when I re- reviewed this budget, it seems like a lot of departments, all full-time person, no part-time there for us.
We do have, we do have quite a few number of part-time staff, hard-working employees who are part-time.
I saw a couple of units that does not have a part-time. That's what I see this status here. We're not going to talk this right now, but I face what we've talked about AB 2561. I appreciate staff presenting it out to us. I mean, this is information important to us. But however, I want to thank the staff working so hard with us. You are running a short staff. We all know this is tough years, and we know the budget has been really tight in our city too. I mean, coming inside in this position, I realized a lot of red tape in the front of me, and so I want to ask the staff, there was some question, I wrote it down here. Mayor, sorry about that. Because you have projection, you have a budget to support the behind that, you also running a red tape in there. And the staffing wise, we all had to be watched carefully. And I don't want to drive staff crazy over working them, you know, then you overtime pay. That's not what we want. And we want the people to work regularly, out there and go home, enjoy the family. But however, we, if they need, you say you want to have a study on part-time hiring status, right? So how soon can you get the results back? Go ahead, Drew.
The part-time staffing study is part of our budget submission for FY 2526. We do have our submissions in from our various vendors. We put out an RFP a few months ago. If there's direction, we could move forward with that in the next couple of weeks. And it would take approximately six months to complete. Our goal is to make sure we have that in hand before we work on next year's budget build.
Would that be part-time considered retirement people coming back to work? They consider that?
We have many folks who come to the city of Cerritos for what we call their encore career.
There you go, the experienced people come back. Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmembers Hung, do you have any questions?
My question is about a new system. We're talking about 980. I'm pleased that, you know, that could be a very good system, because that's how is the trend, and it's good for the employees. But my question is, what our service to our residents would be sacrificed? Or do you have a better system, make sure that residents won't be complaining about the service? Because we do come back, you know, one day, you know, per different department.
I'll, I'll address that. When, when the MOU was presented to the City Council for adoption a few months ago, and the MOU provisions did include for a 980 alternative work schedule, it was the understanding that the hours of operation for facilities would not change. In other words, that the 980 system would be implemented without any change to hours that were open. So from the, from the residents and the customer standpoint, things should remain the same as far as what has been planned so far.
Thank you.
Yes, and I'm gonna ask Councilmember Polito if he has any questions. I do want to remind the council that these are questions, and you will all have an opportunity to ask more questions and, and make comments after the public comment period. Councilmember Polito, do you have any questions?
I have some comments. I'd like to make them now, and.
You can't wait till after the public comment period? You want to make them now?
I could wait, but I, I'd like to share them.
Okay, go ahead.
So first off, I just want to say thank you to Drew and to Amy and to Robert for this great report. I, I want to commend whoever authored Assembly Bill 2561. And to see that this is the first time that this organization has had a report like this. What a difference 14 years makes, you know, from, and I say 14 years, because when I came on the City Council in 2011, it's like night and day from how it was both characterized by Drew and then also by Rogan. And also, I want to take the opportunity and thank Rogan and Alma and Matt for being here tonight and for giving voice to the perspective of the city employees relative to this agenda item. When I say it's like night, it's a night and day, 14 years, I would characterize the, the atmosphere of the city of Cerritos in 2011 as labor management turmoil. And tonight, like night and day, a brand-new day, I would say that this feels like, you know, it's a complete turnaround. And I see shaking heads from both management and labor. And so, you know, I, I just want to start by commending folks for all the hard work that was put in in order to get us to this day. And the reason why I want to commend whoever authored this bill is because it clearly is to achieve some level of transparency, but also, I want to say, achieve kind of like a, a health check of the organization before we adopt the annual budget. I mean, it's explicitly in there. It says to annually present specified, specified hiring data at a public meeting prior to the adoption of their annual budget. What, what a great idea. That before we start making our financial plans for the coming fiscal year, that we check how we're doing when it comes to the greatest expense and, and, well, not just expense, but investment, and that's in the people of the organization. And where we at relative to hiring, and, and thank you for all of the the data, even more data than we were compelled to do, since we had fell short of a threshold that would require us to report more information. But all of the information that was reported, you know, great indicators. So, yeah, I just want to start with that. I, I guess I will give it back to the mayor so that we could have the public comment on this. But at the appropriate time, I'd love to be the maker of the motion to receive and file this. But I also have another request that's related to this, that is going to ask for council concurrence to put something on, on the agenda that this report has sparked my interest in. More curiosity based upon the data presented, and I'd say it'd be good. So I'll wait, and I'll give it back to Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
You don't want to ask for consensus now?
Yeah, I could.
It's up to you.
Okay, then I'll go. Much like I had asked in the first or second meeting, because the fourth, fourth meeting for this brand-new council, right? I had asked to put, to receive council consensus to direct the city manager to put on the agenda in closed session to discuss the contracts with the, the three charter employees that this council hires and evaluates and so forth. And that's the city manager, the city clerk, and the city attorney. In a similar way, we, we are the council that adopts the contract with our main bargaining group that's AFSMI Local 619, Cerritos City Employees. Frankly, I haven't seen the contract yet, and I'd love to, because I'd love to see what type of progress we actually made in that last negotiated contract. I'm not even quite sure when that was adopted. I know that it wasn't adopted in the past, you know, just a few weeks since we've been on the council. You know, the new members and me returning. But I'd be very curious, and I, I would love to ask for consensus from the council to direct the city manager to put on, on a meeting before we adopt the budget. A closed-session item where we could review that current contract with our Cerritos City Employees, and I'd love to invite to the table those who are part of the negotiating team for management, as well as those who are a part of the negotiating team for the union. Just for the edification of the new members and perhaps even for the, the continuing council members so that they could ask whatever questions that they might have, and it could further illuminate how we got to this day. Because I'm, I think to say please is an understatement. I'm actually quite proud of everyone's work that brought us here today. And I'm glad to be back, knowing that it's such a beautiful relationship that I see here.
You know, I concur this way.
I concur.
I concur, and Mr. City Manager, in the interim, can you please give a copy of the contract to all of the council members?
Yes, sir, be happy to provide a memo in short order.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And, and to answer your question, Assembly Bill 2561 was authored by Assembly Member Tina McKinnar.
Right on.
And Mayor Protem Johnson, do you have any further questions? My question is, now that we had this agenda item, and we did not exceed the 20% threshold of AB 2561, is this the one and only agenda report regarding the requirements of Assembly Bill 2561? Or did you say that we're gonna have this heard one more time? Mr. Schneider?
No, sir, this will be the, the single report unless there's additional questions from council.
Okay, so this will be the single agenda report regarding the information that's discussed because of Assembly Bill 2561. Thank you. And I do want to thank you, Drew, for this agenda report. I also want to thank Amy Thomas. Thank you, Amy. So I will now open it for public comments on this item. Do we have any public comments? Seeing none. I will close the public comment period. Does the City Council have any additional questions or comments? Councilmember Say, do you have any additional questions or comments? Okay, Councilmember Hung? Councilmember Polito?
I have no further questions. I'd like to make the motion.
Okay. Mayor Protem Johnson, do you have any additional questions or comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a comment. So Drew, thank you so much for your report, and to Rogan, Alma, for your thoughtful comments, and Matt also for attending tonight. I have support initiatives that lower our vacancy rates and increase employee retention. As mentioned in our report, the city has enhanced recruitment and retention by offering an alternative works schedule program such as 980, as well as lead flexibility improvements. And I'm all about employee morale, so I'm very pleased to see this. We need to invest in our employees, as Councilmember Polito had mentioned. They are the heart of the operation. City services cannot be accomplished without our hard-working employees. However, in the past, the city has relied on vacancy savings by using unspent funds, salary funds from unfilled positions to balance budgets or even grow the reserves. Fortunately, Robert has built an executive team that has been able to identify these issues, and residents rely on the services provided by our employees. I value the relationship with our partners, AFSMI. I do want to refer some of the issues that were brought forth to the Personnel Committee. And if, whenever it's appropriate, I'd like to make a motion as well. I don't know if you want to make your motion first. I guess there'll be two separate motions. If you want, Councilmember, you can make your motion. I don't know what, if your motion's similar to mine.
I will, I will call, I, I will, I will ask for the motions after all the councilists completed their comments.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yes, sorry.
All right, thank you. So I just wanted to make a comment, and I'm very thankful that Rogan and Alma and Matt have come today to share with the council your report and make yourself available for questions and represent the hard-working employees of the city of Cerritos. I've been a better council member since I got elected in 2017 because of Rogan having transparent communication with me about our hard-working employees of Cerritos. So I want to thank you, especially Rogan, for representing the employees all these years in addition to the hard work you're doing over at the Cerritos Center for the, for the Performing Arts. So do we have any motions on this item? And I'll ask Councilmember Polito for a motion.
Actually, I'll go ahead and yield to Mayor Protem.
Okay, so Mayor Protem Johnson, do you have a motion?
I do. My motion is to have this refer back to the Personnel Committee and ask staff to prepare an agenda to further discuss on a succession protocol plan, the 960 practice, and current practice we have with part-time staff.
I second that. I like that.
Did you catch, did you catch that second, Mrs. City Clerk, Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. I heard Councilmember Polito second.
All right, let's vote.
And the motion passes on a vote of five to zero.
Thank you very much, colleagues. Thank you.
All right, I will look over at our city manager. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted at the conclusion of this item, since we do have most of our management team here for a separate agenda item. It is customary at City Council meetings to introduce new members of our team. We have several of them here tonight. And because we are talking about hiring on this agenda item, I wanted to go ahead and do so now, if I may. I'm going to begin with a newest member of our Department of Community and Cultural Services, Eric Cardozo. He's now the city's Library Services Manager. He has previously served at the Cerritos Library from 2003 to 2021, before he joined the City of Long Beach Public Library, where he worked from 2021 to 2025. He just started back with us within the last couple of weeks. He holds a master's degree in Information and Library Services, and he's excited to rejoin the Cerritos team as the Library Services Manager. I have several members of our team I'd like to acknowledge, and they can wave so that you know who they are, and at the end we'll give them a nice warm welcome. Next, from the Department of Administrative Services, we have Lauren Vargas, back there. She is the new Enterprise Services Manager overseeing training, risk and performance management, contracting and procurement. Lauren previously was a senior advisor to the Chief Executive Officer for the U.S. International Development Finance Corporation, Finance Corporation, and was the Chief of Staff to the Undersecretary of the U.S. Air Force. So completing a career in the federal government, she's now joining us back in local government here in Cerritos. And then we also have Amy Thomas, who's been with the city for a number of years and roles in our Human Resources Division. Recently, she was appointed to be the Human Resources Manager overseeing recruitment, workplace safety, compensation, and benefits. She, as I mentioned, worked in other roles in the department, was previously the city's Enterprise Services Manager, and also Personnel Administrator. We also have, in the Communications and Marketing Division, Glenn Arnadi. He's the new Marketing Administrator in our Communications and Marketing Division. Glenn comes to the city from the nonprofit sector, where he served as a Marketing and Technology Manager for an environmental education organization. He has also led marketing initiatives for various organizations in a freelance capacity. In his role here at the city, he's supporting marketing strategies and campaigns for various departments and divisions for the city. And in our Public Works Department, I'm pleased to note the promotion of Jorge Martinez, who was recently promoted to the role of Parks and Trees Superintendent. He has proudly served the city of Cerritos for 17 years. Prior to working for the city, he led his own landscaping business, and he left that business to join us as a Park Gardener One, and subsequently advancing to several roles within the city, and again, now Parks and Trees Superintendent. And finally, sorry, I have a couple more. We also have Jared Lee from Department of Public Works. He's the Assistant City Engineer. Jared brings over 23 years of engineering experience in the private sector, supporting public sector clients. And he's now leading the Engineering Division, and also oversees the capital improvement program for the city. Cerritos is his hometown, and he's happy to be a second-generation Cerritos resident. And also, I would like to note the Theater Department. We have some folks in the department who were recently promoted, beginning with Jenny Merrilies. She began her career at the city in 2002 in the Recreation Services Division. She joined the Theater Department over nine years ago, and has been a key member ever since. In September of 2024, she was promoted to Theater Patron Services Manager. She holds a Master's in Public Administration from Cal State LA. And finally, Stephen Hart. He joined the Theater Department in 2003, and has had several various technical production roles. He also gained experience working in our MIS Division, previously called MIS Division or IT Division, working in IT roles there. In December 2024, he was promoted to Technical Administrator in the Theater Department. So if you could, please join me in a warm round of applause to welcome to these folks in their new roles. And that is all I have as far as my announcement. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for letting us know, letting the city council know about all these fantastic additions to our city and promotions of our knowledgeable, experienced staff. Thank you, City Manager. Okay, so I'm going to ask my council colleagues for consensus. Let's hear item 9D next. Item 9D, Preliminary Fiscal Year 25-26 Annual Budget. Is that okay with everybody?
I concur.
So, next, we're going to be hearing item 9D. The next item on the agenda is 9D. City Manager, do we have a report for this item?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Item 9D is a review of the preliminary budget for the upcoming 25-26 fiscal year. This is a major milestone, and what you have before you represents several months of diligent work by the entire team you see here present this evening, as well as additional support staff within our various departments and divisions. Tonight, we're going to provide an overview of the budget document. We're not planning to go page by page, but we will provide key information, and are happy to answer any questions on specifics as we go along. The presentation this evening will begin with Drew Schneider, Director of Administrative Services, and following his introduction, an overview, he will also be joined by Peter Kemp, the city's Finance and Budget Manager and City Treasurer. So with that, I will defer to Drew to begin the presentation.
Good evening. Let's, we're having a little bit of technical difficulties here with our PowerPoint presentation, but I'll go ahead and speak a little bit extemporaneously while we get that working along. One of the first things I would like to note with this budget, and I'd like to echo the comments of the city manager, this is truly a collaboration across all departments and divisions. This work does not happen in any one silo, but is a product-
Excuse me, Drew?
Yes, sir.
So what, is there a PowerPoint that you're supposed to be having on while you're speaking?
Yes, sir. So I was going to give you some overview while the team works through a technical issue with the PowerPoints.
Okay, so why don't we just take a five-minute break right now?
That'd be terrific, sir. Thank you.
Okay, can you, and then you can get, you can do the report the way you meant to do it, right? Okay, so five-minute break.
The preliminary fiscal year 2526 annual budget. And let's go.
Thank you, Mayor. I will now defer the presentation to Drew Schneider.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council. It's a pleasure to be here for you tonight. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, tonight's work is an amalgamation of thousands of hours of staff work across the entire city. Every department, every division was involved in this process, particularly this year with some of the challenges we've experienced. We made sure we made a comprehensive review. We looked under all the couch cushions. We're delivering the best product we can to you tonight. Want to start out, slide please? I would like to start out first by noting our strategic plan. So one of the things that sets this budget apart from all the previous budgets that we have produced is this is our first budget produced under our comprehensive multi-year strategic planning effort. These priorities outlined here are a reflection of an in-depth process involving hundreds of community conversations over the course of a six-month period to determine what the priorities of the community were and ultimately approved by the city council and form the budget that you see in front of you tonight. Next slide, please. This budget also reflects significant investments across our organization. Previous slide, please. All right, leave it, please. So as... All right, next slide, please. As we touched upon a few minutes ago when discussing our hiring practices, this budget reflects a comprehensive citywide class and compensation study that was completed, where we've modernized our salary structures, reclassified positions, and we've aligned ourselves to deliver Sarrios into the future. This has improved our recruitment and retention efforts. It also reflects a brand-new Public Works Business Operations Division. This division is focused in on the important efforts on financially overseeing our resources, making sure that we are maximizing our grants and other resources to fund our important capital improvement program and daily operations within Public Works. It also has been very exciting tonight to announce the development of our new economic development team and our community development department. We are, in a few short weeks, we will have a new economic development manager starting that will lead the city's efforts to retain businesses and leverage our city-owned properties. Next slide, please. It also reflects expanded communications and marketing functions with new positions, including, as mentioned a few minutes ago, our new marketing administrator. This administrator will focus on two primary areas to drive the city forward. It will be focused in supporting our community development departments with economic development activities, making sure that we market the city, that we say, "This is why to invest here in Sarrios, why to do business in Sarrios, and why to come to Sarrios for your shopping experiences." It also will partner with our theater departments to promote our award-winning shows and variety of programming we do at the theater. We've also, based upon in-depth analysis and stat feedback, we have realigned our code enforcement division, moving it from community safety to community development, which meets with industry-best practices. Next slide, please. It also continues to reflect ongoing private investment in the city of Sarrios. We are not able to do this alone. Our private sector partners help to make sure that we have the most robust offerings here in the city and that we have those strong sales tax numbers. So, and I'll... We have a few important things to announce in terms of the new Genesis Sarrios dealership, expansion of GST's operations, and some renovations at many of our facilities, including Starbucks, America's Tire, and North Italia Restaurants, all of which are doing gangbuster business. In addition to benefits to the city, it enhances our job creation opportunities, enhances our sales tax revenues, which is an important part of our overall economic picture, and reflects stronger local economy. Looking ahead, we are continuing to remain committed to our business retention, strategic growth, and expanding the revenue base to maintain the highest levels of services that we can for our residents and our community. Next slide, please. This budget also reflects four important council consensus items and direction that we've received from this council on priorities for this organization. It continues to invest in our ALPR program under our Community Safety Division in partnership with the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department, making sure that we are aware of any potential nefarious actors coming into our city and addressing crime and preventing crime wherever possible. It continues to invest in two community safety officer positions. I am pleased to announce that those positions did open for recruitment last week, and we are actively recruiting them now. It can also continue to invest in our volunteers and patrol and reserve deputies. These volunteers serve an essential role in our city to make sure that they back up the work performed by our on-duty deputies. We're continuing to look to expand our communication efforts to increase interest in these potential opportunities to serve the city in new capacity. It also reflects and continued investment in our parks with a particular focus in on our Frontier Park and replacing some broken equipment at that site. Next slide, please. This budget does reflect an in-depth study performed by our Community and Cultural Services Departments to look at service hours at both our library and our senior center. Based upon that analysis, we do recommend maintaining our current... Not expanding our current hours of service. In the last piece, I do want to draw attention to our community group funding, as was mentioned in our gender report. Next slide, please. So at this point, I'll turn it over to our Budget and Finance Manager/City Treasurer, Peter Kemp. Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Schneider and Mr. Lopez, and good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. If you can go to the next slide, please. So I'd like to start by just kind of giving you an overview of the budget document that's in front of you. It's a very, very large document, so we want to make sure that everyone understands each of the sections involved in the budget. The first section of the budget is our introduction and our budget message. This is a high-level overview from our city manager highlighting some of the accomplishments in the current year, as well as some of the goals and strategies heading into the new year. There's an overview of some of the numbers, as well as some other information about the city, some of the fund structure, some of the city's financial policies, and various information to help readers understand all the information that's in the budget book. Following that, we have our fund balance statements. We often refer to these as the blue pages, and this is essentially a financial statement projecting out for next year of each of our various funds. Following that, we have details of all of our revenue types across all fund types. We then have our expenditure summaries, followed by individual departmental budgets. And this is where you can dive into the detail of each department and each division, line item by line item, to see where the proposed appropriations are going. At the end of this section is our positions and salaries. This is where you can see a list of all of our budgeted positions. As Drew mentioned, we have moved to reporting these numbers in terms of full-time equivalent instead of actual bodies. This helps us with planning and has really improved kind of the budgeting in our process this year. And following that, the budgeted positions, you'll see some salary tables reflecting a 3.1% COLA as part of the recently approved MOU that is reflected in the budget. After our operational expenditures, we have our capital improvement program. There's a summary of the capital improvement program at the beginning of that section, followed by details of each project. And there's some information on our successor agency following that, and finally, some appendices in the back, providing some additional information and context. Next slide, please. So just looking at high-level, all-city revenues here. As the city council is aware, we break down revenues into two types of revenue. We have our recurring revenue, and these are the revenues that support our ongoing services. This is primarily fueled by taxes, fees, franchise, that sort of thing. And then we have one-time revenues. These can be grants. We have payments from our successor agency, various forms of funding that comes in. There's not consistent on a year-to-year basis, but can be used for one-time uses. Looking at the fiscal year 2526 forecast, we are projecting approximately 127.4 million in recurring annual revenues and about 11.5 million in one-time annual revenues, bringing our total projection of total annual revenues to 138.9 million. I will bring up a caveat right now, following the publication of our preliminary budget. And it's important to note that this preliminary budget is a point-in-time forecast of what's to come. But following the publication of this document last week, we did receive... We did meet with our sales tax consultants, which we do on a quarterly basis. And we did receive some updated sales tax forecasts for both the current year and next fiscal year. That information was recently provided to the city council. It's important to note that, again, this budget... A lot of hours go into the production of this budget book, and it is kind of a point-in-time forecast. So the staff did not have time to incorporate those updated numbers. But those updated revenue numbers for sales tax will be incorporated into the final budget proposal and will be included as well in our subsequent budget study session, agenda report, so that can be evaluated with all of the other city council direction and other changes that come about over the next couple of council meetings here. So with that said, I will note that the numbers, particularly the revenue numbers here on this slide... I'm sorry, in this PowerPoint presentation, they do not reflect the updated sales tax numbers. We do have one slide that we were able to kind of update, show you some sales tax history and with the new revised numbers. But generally speaking, the numbers in the PowerPoint do reflect the numbers that are in the book in front of you. So just kind of keep in mind that there is some modification to those sales tax numbers. Next slide, please. Here we have an overview of our city expenditures. We have our annual operating budget, and this is our recurring expenses, ongoing expenses, primarily personnel, operations, and maintenance, that sort of thing. Then we have our annual CIP budget. This is investments in infrastructure. And finally, we have a new category. This is a result of the recently approved financial reserve policy. And this new category has been created to fund strategic one-time expenditures using general fund reserves that are in excess of the city's established target reserve amount. These one-time expenditures are things such as capital equipment, consultant studies, and also includes proposed additional discretionary payments, or ADPs, as we call them, to CalPERS to help reduce the city's unfunded pension liability. The budget before you proposes additional discretionary payments of $13 million and $2 million in the current year and upcoming year, respectively. And as previously mentioned, the ability to make these investments is the result of healthy general fund reserves. I will note, though, that the proposed additional discretionary payments to CalPERS were calculated using preliminary budget estimates available at the time of publication. These amounts, you know, may be adjusted based on the final budget numbers and our city council direction. So prior to proceeding with any additional discretionary payments toward the CalPERS unfunded liability, staff will return to the city council with a formal recommendation and request for approval. What that brings us to is total expenditures, including all three of these categories of spending, proposed at $155.2 million for the upcoming fiscal year. Next slide, please. So this slide here just shows kind of a comparison of our expenditures to revenues, the recurring revenues. This is our operating budget, so again, recurring revenues that are funding ongoing expenditures. And as we can see from our preliminary budget, we have recurring revenues of 127.4 million, ongoing expenditures forecasted at 128.5 million, and that leaves us with a modest deficit of revenues over expenditures of $1.1 million. Next slide, please. So now we'll talk about our funds and our fund types, the kind of big picture here, and what that means compared to these revenues and expenditures. Next slide, please. So first, I will start with the governmental funds. The slide here shows what we are forecasting for balances for each fund type. We have various funds that we use for different activities throughout the city. I'll start with our general fund. Our general fund is the main operating fund for the city, and it funds most of the day-to-day activities. activities. We are forecasting at the end of fiscal year 2026, '25-'26, a general fund reserve balance of approximately $40.4 million. I will note that this is in line with our financial reserve policy that was recently adopted, and it also kind of reiterates the point that the city, while we are navigating a modest deficit between revenues and expenditures, we have very healthy general fund reserves to balance the budget with the use of those reserves and still maintain that maximum target, 35% in general fund reserves. We also have our general fund miscellaneous. These are funds such as the CCP Endowment Fund, our Art in Public Places Fund. These are funds that are assigned for specific purposes by the City Council. For financial reporting purposes, they are included with the general fund, but we do separate them, particularly for budgeting purposes, so it's, we're very transparent about what this money is being used for. Then we have our special revenue funds. These are funds primarily from outside sources that have specific, possibly legal restrictions on their use. Much of these funds are used for capital projects, things such as street improvements, that sort of thing. The estimated fund balance for the special revenue funds proposed for next year is $24.9 million. Next, we have our Capital Projects Fund. This is our municipal improvement fund that helps support infrastructure. And in past years, this fund acted as sort of a pass-through fund, with the general fund subsidizing kind of at the end of the year to bring any negative balance back to zero. With the adoption of our financial reserve policy this fiscal year, we have been able to establish a clear reserve in our Capital Project Fund. This has enabled us to plan much better for capital projects in the future and really kind of see how our total city reserve funds are allocated and earmarked, so that we can, we know exactly how much money we have moving forward for capital projects specifically. Finally, we have our enterprise, oh, I'm sorry, our internal service fund here. This is our equipment replacement fund, and this supports the maintenance and replacement of equipment, such as, you know, vehicles, public works, gardening equipment, that sort of thing. Per City Council direction from a few years ago, we do maintain the fund balance of this equipment replacement fund at around $10.6 million, and that will maintain for next fiscal year. Next slide. Next, we have our enterprise funds. These are funds where we provide services to the city for a fee. These are things such as water, sewer, reclaimed water, and electric utility services. The reserve balances that we're showing you here, in aggregate, total $11.8 million. This is a big change from prior years, and much of this has to do, again, with our recently adopted financial reserve policy. The proposed budget in front of you is using those excess reserve funds that we had identified in the general fund to help build reserve balances in the enterprise funds here. So proposed for next fiscal year, we will, proposing to end the year with about $8.6 million in our water fund, about $0.6 million in our reclaimed water fund, $2.2 million in the electric utility fund, and $0.4 million in our sewer fund. This brings our reclaimed water fund, sewer fund, and electric utility fund up to our target reserve balances in all three of those funds, and it gets us much closer in our water fund. That in conjunction with the ongoing water rate study, and we have made quite a few measures here to increase the revenues coming in from the enterprise funds and close the deficits that we've seen in the past. Next slide. So speaking of those deficits in the enterprise funds, as the council is aware, historically, our water and sewer and electric funds have operated at a deficit. The City Council did direct in fiscal year '23-'24 the forgiveness of general fund loans to the water and sewer funds, the amount of about $25 million. The slide here, the chart here, shows expenses in the orange line on the top and revenues in the green line below, and you can see expenses have outpaced revenues for quite some time, and recently, in the past four years or so, that gap has grown. Revenues do remain pretty flat in our, particularly our water fund, and expenses continue to rise. So again, the city is taking measures to close this gap and address this deficit. Next slide, please. So now we'll take a look at our city revenues. Next slide. So this is a history of all city revenues. This is both recurring and one-time funding sources. So you'll see the city saw strong gains in available resources coming out of the COVID-19 pandemic. However, recent years and short-term forecasts do show a stagnation in overall revenue growth, particularly in sales tax, which is, as the council is aware, the city's largest source of revenue. The city will have to remain prudent in exploring ways to increase revenues moving forward. Next slide, please. So here we have the breakdown of that $138.9 million by fund type. What is very apparent in the chart, a great majority of our funding, about $103.2 million comes from the general fund. Again, this supports our day-to-day activities, programs, and services in the city. This equates to about 75% of all revenues. Our special revenue funds, which again account for revenues that are restricted for particular purposes, account for $14.2 million in revenue, or about 10% of the total. And finally, our enterprise funds, which include water, sewer, electric, account for about $22.8 million, or about 15% of total revenues. Next slide, please. So here we have a breakdown of specifically our general fund revenues. And as you can see, our sales tax number, it leads the way here. It is the city's largest source of revenue, and even with the modest revision of sales tax revenue, that remains a very large component of general fund revenues, approximately, you know, 50, close to 50% of our general fund revenues. Below that, we have our use of money and property. This is primarily money that comes in from our very robust investment portfolio, as well as our ground and lease portfolio. We have other taxes below that, which includes our no-low property taxes. Then that's followed by current fees and services of about $10.6 million, and the other revenue categories include our intergovernmental, licenses and permits, franchise fees, fines and forfeitures, and then some miscellaneous revenue categories. Overall, again, general fund revenues are projected for next fiscal year at about $103.2 million. Next slide, please. So this is a history and forecast of our sales tax revenue. I will note that these numbers do include our updated sales forecast, sorry, sales tax forecast. So you'll note in the previous slide, that number in yellow was slightly higher. Our updated forecast is anticipating sales tax of about $43.8 million for next fiscal year. So in addition to some past history here, we're showing a couple of years into the future. We work with a sales tax consultant that's very good at their job, and they're able to provide us some forecasts a couple of years extending out. As you'll see, forecast, the forecast for the last four years or so has remained flat, even down, and the short-term forecast going into fiscal year '25-'26, as well as '26-'27 show kind of a continuing trend there, pretty flat sales tax revenues. Moving on to the next slide, please. This is just an overview of our, the city's ground and lease portfolio. This includes all of the city-owned properties that the city leases out to various businesses and bring, generate, is expected to generate about $11.2 million in revenue for next fiscal year. Next slide, please. So the city is a no-low property tax city, which means that the city does not assess a property tax on its residents or businesses. However, we do receive an annual subsidy from the county based on a formula that utilizes assessed valuation as a criteria. As you can see, the assessed valuation for 2024 reached an unprecedented $12.5 billion based on the most recent LA County Assessors Report. Next slide, please. Based on that assessed valuation, the city is expected to receive approximately $5 million in no-low property tax revenues. This is a modest but still steady increase from our prior year's property tax revenue. Next slide. Finally, I would like to highlight our city water enterprise revenues. Our water enterprise is our largest enterprise fund and generates the most revenue, also incurs the most expenses of all of our enterprise services. As you can see, our water revenues have been quite flat for some time. Water rates remain unchanged and have been unchanged for several years. As we previously mentioned, staff is working with a consultant right now on a rate study of that water, the water rates, and we are hoping to bring something back to council in the near future to help address this shortfall. Next slide, please. So now we'll take a high-level look at the city expenditures. Next slide. So what we see here is our city combined expenditures, so this is expenditures across all fund types, both recurring and one-time expenditures, including our CIP. You can see that expenses have grown rapidly over the last few years. Much of this is based on targeted investment by the city in both infrastructure, operations, and personnel, but much of it can also be attributed to things like high inflation in recent years. The most recent fiscal year, we are projecting, including both recurring and one-time expenses, approximately $168.2 million in expenditures, and moving into next fiscal year, staff has worked hard to reduce that number and be fiscally conservative here with a proposed expenditure amount of $155.2 million. Next slide, please. So here we're looking at the operating expenditures and those strategic one-time investments, which is primarily our capital equipment here. So this excludes the CIP portion of our budget. Total expenditures here are about $130 million, and this is the breakdown by department. Public Works, which has historically been one of the larger expenditures, is at 36.2% of the total budget here, about $47 million. That's followed by Community Safety. The city's investment in public safety is about $23.4 million proposed for next year. And following that, we have our Administrative Services Department, Community and Cultural Services. We have our Theater, Community Development, and finally, our Legislative and Administrative Departments here. Next slide. So this is essentially the same number here, but it's shown in a different way. Instead of breaking it out by department, we're breaking this out by expenditure type. As you can see here, Personnel is a very large portion of our budget here for next fiscal year. We're anticipating Personnel expenditures of about $55.5 million, or about 42% of the overall operating expenditure and equipment budget. Operations and Maintenance account for $75.4 million, or 57%, and our Capital Outlay, which is again our capital equipment replacement, comes in at about $1.3 million, or about 1% of that budget. Next slide. Also next, we're going to go through the Capital Improvement Program. I'll do a high-level overview here, and then we'll go through each Capital Improvement Program category and just highlight a few key projects for the, proposed for the upcoming fiscal year. Next slide. So the Capital Improvement Program for next fiscal year is proposed at $23 million, and it includes various categories of infrastructure improvements. The largest one here is our Streets and Highways, where we are proposing $10.9 million in investments. Our Government Buildings category is proposing $6.4 million, and Other Projects category is at $2.3 million. The smaller categories here include water improvements, traffic signals, parks and open space, and our sewer improvements. Next slide, please. So here we have our Government Buildings category. Again, this is $6.4 million proposed for next fiscal year. Projects in this category include the Cerritos Center for the Performing Arts Roof Replacement, our much-needed Civic Center HVAC System Replacement, as well as a citywide facility condition assessment, which will preserve and extend the useful life of some of our key public facilities. Next slide, please. Our Other Projects categories coming in at a proposed $2.3 million for next year. This supports the citywide facility network infrastructure project to enhance connectivity across the city, along with some planning initiatives such as the Asset Management Program, as well as the Fleet Replacement Master Plan. This category also includes the installation of the Historical Cow Milking Time Sculpture, continuing the city's investment in our public art. Next slide, please. Our Parks and Open Space category is proposing $1.3 million for this year, for next year. Key investments include the Heritage Park Play Island renovation, our picnic shelter renovations, as well as a citywide playground improvements and resurfacing program to enhance recreation amenities and promote accessible, vibrant park spaces. I'll note that our Heritage Park Play Island renovation, this project is contingent on Measure A funding that the city is working, currently working with securing at this time. Next slide. So our Sewer Improvements here is a modest $50,000, and the funding here supports the biennial rehabilitation and replacement of sewer lift stations to maintain critical sewer system infrastructure and ensure long-term service reliability. Next slide. Our Streets and Highways category is proposed at $10.9 million. This is a large investment in our local roads here. Significant funding here is directed towards the arterial street rehabilitation program, the residential street improvements program, as well as the pine tree reforestation program to improve safety mobility, as well as community aesthetics throughout the city. Next slide, please. Our Traffic Signals category is proposing $100,000 for next year and includes funding for the annual Traffic Safety Corridor Improvements Project, which upgrades safety lighting to LED technology, replaces faded traffic signs, and restripes roadways to enhance visibility and maintain compliance with traffic safety standards. Next slide, please. Finally, our last category here, this is our Water Improvements, and we are proposing $2 million for next year. Projects here include the C4 wellsite chlorine room modifications, citywide catch basin retrofit, as well as reclaimed water system improvements to enhance water quality, support environmental compliance, and strengthen long-term infrastructure reliability. So that there, that's an overview, a high-level overview of both of our operating budget and our CIP budget. I'm now going to turn it over to Mr. Snyder to discuss a couple of more items before we close out the presentation. Next slide, please.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kemp. So now I want to return to kind of bigger-picture conversation about probably the most important aspects of this conversation tonight. City staff comes to you fully acknowledging that we are presenting a deficit budget, and in fact, a bigger deficit than we originally planned, and we've been very mindful throughout this process. We have already, in this, in our conversations to date, reduced the deficit amount by more than $10 million. This is done through a variety of different means. Right now, we are reflecting approximately a $2.9 million overall deficit. The efforts to bring this number down to where it's at today represent significant overall efforts by this entire team. We've looked under all the couch cushions. We've looked where there's any additional opportunities to address either cost reductions or additional revenues. We've done a variety of things to, from enhancing tee times at the golf course, thanks to the work of our Community Cultural Services Departments, to additional beverage revenue opportunities at the theater in order to bring these numbers in alignment as much as possible. I will say with tonight, we are still going to ultimately bring you a budget that is, reflects a, we are going to be able to fully fund our operations by using a small amount of our strategic reserves. We are still well above and beyond the 35% reserve called for in our financial reserve policies. The city remains in a strong financial position. I want to emphasize this as much as possible. While we are going to exercise an abundance of caution, and our policies do reflect this, the city still has a significant amount of money in its reserves, and we are well-equipped to address these issues in the short term. As I mentioned earlier in our discussion regarding AB 2561, we are about to embark on a part-time staffing study that will look across our entire organization to make sure that we're using those dollars that the city has afforded us in the most frugal and cost-effective measure possible, that each of the positions that we're putting out there are necessary to maintain the level of services that our residents have come to expect. This builds upon the comprehensive citywide class and compensation study that was referenced earlier and completed in 2024, where we looked across our entire city for our full-time positions to determine what staffing levels were necessary.
Can we go to the next slide, please?
Thank you very much. It also affects adjustments to this budget. Peter and his team, working with each of the departments, have gone through and looked at the part-time staffing levels that exist today, adjusting, adjusted those staffing figures to reflect historical usage as opposed to aspirational numbers. This has saved millions of dollars in our budget, and it's already reflected in This has saved millions of dollars in our budget, and it's already reflected in the numbers in front of you. We've also gone through a very painstaking process, informed by our new Capital Improvement Program policy, of looking at all of our capital projects and bringing to you the capital projects which reflect the biggest impact, the most important regulatory or safety items, and are ones that we do truly believe are necessary to maintain our services. We've also looked at our maintenance. Well, we have, as you noticed, we have built up our Public Works operational costs over the years. We are taking a very conservative approach in our maintenance costs in this coming year, understanding that our deficit numbers are where they're at. There's a variety of other operational efficiencies that we're introducing in this budget. One smaller example I'll give you, that it does reflect kind of us looking in every possible corner, is we are proposing to reduce the frequency in which the Cerritos news, which is currently a monthly publication, is distributed, and moving that to a bimonthly news cycle. Our IT team and our Public Works teams, along with their client departments, have looked extensively at all of our capital equipment to determine, hey, can we make that computer work a little bit longer? Can we keep that vehicle on the road a bit longer in order to reduce those expenses? We've also looked comprehensively across the organization, our software licensing, and to reduce potential costs there, and we're embarking on an IT master plan to further streamline those investments. Next slide, please. As was called for in our strategic plan that we mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, one of the important pieces that we're bringing forward tonight is that we are concurrently conducting enterprise rate studies for all of our enterprise services, our water, sewer, and reclaimed water funds. We're also actively working to identify consultants to help us analyze our electric utility and make sure that we can continue to operate that in a sustainable manner. I'm pleased to announce that we are going to go to market tomorrow with a comprehensive citywide fee study to look at all of our fees, from the cost of that trip to the golf course to the fees we charge for rentals at the theater and everything in between, all the way down to the overdue library fines that our library will enforce. We want to make sure that we have a comprehensive understanding of what it truly costs to provide all these services and index against what other organizations are charging for these services to be able to bring back to council a realistic picture of what it costs to do business, what it costs to provide our Cerritos residents with a premium level of service that we provide today, and give this city council the opportunity to weigh in on what level of cost recovery we want to achieve in those efforts. I also want to highlight and get back to what we mentioned at the top of this discussion, our continued focus on economic development. Our Community Development Departments is above all others. They continuously work on a daily basis to find every creative solution, to do the best we can to be the best place to do business in all of LA County. And we continue to invest in that effort. The new Economic Development Team, headed by their new Economic Development Manager, will continue to focus on these efforts and bring additional resources to them's important investment in the city. It'll also make sure that we continue to maximize the use of our city properties, including the Town Center, to make sure that every one of those storefronts is filled and to ensure that we're getting the maximum sales tax revenues we can in those operations and continue to deliver the robust range of services and business opportunities that our residents and our business community have come to expect. We also continue to expand our marketing at CCPA to make sure that every one of those tickets is sold, for as many of the shows as we can, to make sure that we continue to bring in visitors to our city who spend their hard-earned dollars, not only at the theater enjoying the incredible programming there, but are shopping on their way in, they're stopping at the mall and picking up a few things, they're working on their Christmas list, their birthday list, Mother's Day is coming up. If anyone would like to stop by the mall and pick up some last-minute items, I know I will be, and then continue to shop and dine at our restaurants and spend their dollars here in Cerritos. We also continue to modernize our processes in order to improve our activities here in the city. One of the things that we are excited to bring forth to city council a few meetings ago was our new online permitting system, which will continue to streamline our development cycle and provide the best possible customer service to our business and residential needs. One of the things that, under Mr. Tilke's leadership, we've done in the CCPA is move from a more structured season to a continuous rolling programming model so that way he can adapt to the changing desires of the community. He can take advantage of additional opportunities that come our way and book the best possible acts, not only to continue to entertain our residents and our visitors, but continue to drive those dollars to Cerritos. And then I will also mention, as evidenced by Mr. Arnade's attendance tonight, we continue to invest our communications and marketing efforts to make sure that we are telling our story in the most robust way possible, that everyone knows that Cerritos is the place to be and the place to do business. Next slide, please. So I just want to highlight, we have taken a robust effort to look under those couch cushions and look to see where we can find every efficiency that we can, and we know that these decisions that we're bringing forth to city council are challenging ones. Staff has done their due diligence wherever possible and continue to look for additional opportunities. I want to make sure that we keep not only looking at the immediate need in front of us in terms of what we need to do between now and June 26th, but we keep our eye on the ball for the long-range planning that the city needs to do in order to continue to provide the level of service that our residents have come to expect and certainly deserve. I want to emphasize, while this is a deficit this year, we remain in a strong financial position, that we can get through this deficit and even potential impacts into next year based on our current reserve levels. That being said, we do want to emphasize to the city council tonight, it is important that we look towards long-term solutions to continue to provide the financial viability of the city in the years to come, that we're able to invest in the capital projects necessary to provide the park-like atmosphere that our cities reflect, the level of services in our city, and a type of infrastructure that brings these award-winning businesses to our community. With that, Mr. Kemp, myself, Mr. Lopez, and our entire city management team are here to answer any questions you may have. One last item I will highlight before I adjourn is that based upon this late-breaking information regarding sales tax, city staff is recommending that we do add an additional study session between now and Study Session Number Three in order to continue these conversations. With that, I'll turn the floor back over to the mayor.
Thank you, Drew and Peter. I'm going to ask my council colleagues if they have any questions. Council members say, do you have any questions? Do you need a moment?
Right. Sorry, Bob, I lost my voice since yesterday. But first, I want to thank the staff for your complaint, this report. And budget projects are never easy, but they are required by law. Overall, we are in good shape. I know we are economies of 1 million, but I know staff has strengthened as much as you can, some of the area. But when we can focus, I think Drew just mentioned about we all have to work together to bring the business in. And one other thing, I really, when I saw the, was it last week or a week before Ube? It brought about 4,000 people here. When I drive around the city, I see lots and lots of people around that. I think one of the things, I want to especially thank to Mayor Potting, Ms. Johnson, I think you work with the county, right? Am I right? So you bring the people in and people start shopping around. But I'm just always thinking about, we focus on this item or others, what matters is how we ended the year. Now, staff and council will continue to work together to save whatever we can, you know? And some of the area, we might have to consider saying, what do we need to do? I know we start hiring the people, we are hiring the special, I mean, people with experience, to lead in the city for the future better. And I know I spoke to our manager, you know, some of the people can bring some special program here. One of the things my concern is the CCPA, we know that's never money-making. Actually, the one making money more than the library, you know? I'm going to start to enjoy that too, because it used to be, to me, it was very costly by the ticket to go there. But I never forget how Kerry Chan, council former council member, you know, bottomed, mentioned about, we are the one also have to take some responsibility to support our city. But there is something I would like to share with the staff about CCPA. I went to, was it La Marada, right? They have a performance arts center there. They have a preview program there. So we're open to entire city people who come. At that time, I believe not just only La Palma people, I mean, La Marada people, but also Cerritos residents, other residents, oh, we all, I went there. So I see the program they have, that by the end of the program review section, you know, people, all of a sudden, everybody during the middle section, people went up to buy tickets. That's another way to stimulate our income revenue to our CCPA. I'd like to have Drew and Manager Lopez, if you can take a look and what can we do to improve on that and bring some more festival like Ube, kind of stimulate our economy. They, I know our sales tax, I looked this year and compared last year, it's pretty much same, not much different, but still I'm worried about, you know, the future sales tax, the revenue is going to drop. And I think that we can look into what else we can do. Thank you, Mr. Lopez, you shared with me some of the specialty that we hire will bring it out and stimulates our economy. And that, I want to thank you very much, all the staff here tonight, still stays here with us. And I want to thank you for your services. I want to thank you for hard-working. You know, you probably one person work two job, however, let's work together. And I wanted to join the group. If you have anything I can do, please let me know. That would conclude my concern. Thank you, Mayor.
If I may address the question on the theater and with regard to doing activities to generate interest in performances, I'd like to ask our theater executive director, Jeff Tilke, just to briefly highlight some of the efforts that have been made, some changes that have been made over the last year, especially for the benefit of our new council members, with regard to not just the selection of performances, but in particular, getting the word out on those performances to prospective ticket buyers. So Jeff, if you can elaborate on Ticketmaster and other efforts that have been made, please.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of city council. We've made some, as city manager indicated, we've made some terrific strides over the last couple of seasons at CCPA. Some of that was at council direction, most notably from our marketing efforts. We've contracted out marketing and advertising to a professional firm that specializes in entertainment, marketing, and advertising. Our Communications Division, under the leadership of Drew Schneider, has also been instrumental in helping us get that marketing firm up to speed and assisting in really targeting prospective ticket buyers to the shows that we present. In addition to that, Mr. Lopez mentioned Ticketmaster, which is a ticketing system that we switched over to earlier this season. Ticketmaster, while it provides a very robust ticketing solution and platform for us to operate and sell tickets, the real goal there was to get more exposure for CCPA in the marketplace throughout Southern California. Here in Southern California, there are many entertainment and various options for people to not only see live shows, but perhaps go see a movie or do other fun things, maybe visit a nearby park, an amusement park of sorts. So the idea with converting over to Ticketmaster from a marketing effort was to really put Cerritos back on the map as a legitimate player in the entertainment marketplace in Southern California. It's a very dense marketplace. There are a lot of options for live entertainment, and it seems to be working quite well since we converted over to Ticketmaster in December. On that platform alone, we've sold $1 million gross ticket sales. Now, what that does for us, just to give you some more numbers and data to look at, within 35 miles of Cerritos, there are about 8 million people living here. We only need 1,400 of them to show up a night. So it gives us a lot of options to bring people to Cerritos, enjoy the city, enjoy a show at the theater. Ticketmaster provides the added benefit of putting Cerritos in front of 5 million eyeballs, if you will. 5 million unique ticket buyers within that 35-mile radius. We did not have that level of reach prior to December. We just did not have it because it simply is a math problem. We didn't have the marketing to back it. We couldn't reach all of those people alone. So we partnered with Ticketmaster to really get that to happen. And on top of that, we had the added benefit of modernizing our box office, which was also desperately needed. So there's a lot of benefits to that. Also, briefly, I'd like to mention that the operation of CCPA really stands on three pillars of revenue. The biggest one is ticket sales. We hear that a lot, right? We talk about Ticketmaster. We look at our gross ticket sales, our ticket volume of sales, which, by the way, this year, happy to report to the council, this year alone, we are 30,000 tickets up year-over-year on sales volume. We are $1.5 million gross up year-over-year. So we're doing very good things on that front. As my colleague, Mr. Snyder, mentioned earlier, the other two pillars of revenue that we look at are facility use and rentals, and donor development, and sponsorship development. Those other two pillars, we are looking at very carefully, and we are making efforts right now to bolster those pillars significantly. We're looking at partnerships on the rental side that we've really never explored before. We've developed some really great partnerships with the likes of outside promoters such as Nederlander Concerts, which is a very big name. We've also looked at improving, or I should say increasing, the volume of private event rentals, right? So those would be things like weddings and birthday parties and things of that nature. And then from a third pillar look, our donor and sponsorship levels, we are looking at bringing to the council very soon an opportunity to reestablish a nonprofit entity and channel by which we can do some additional fundraising through donations and other sponsorships. This will provide the city council an opportunity to consider a channel of resource and revenues that we really haven't tapped into since the building opened in 1993. So that's probably a little more than was expected, but those are the things that we're focused on right now to really elevate and bolster the revenues over there at CCPA.
I want to thank you so much and explain that to the public. We're watching us, so we do see the CCPA not just running a negative, actually are starting to make some changes. I want to thank you all for working so hard. That's really a plus information. One more question, Mayor. This will talk about, I really appreciate that you put it down, investing in our people, Economic Development Team that you created. I really like that. Does this team kind of related to Chamber of Commerce or not really?
So just for clarification, we do have an Economic Development Manager position that we have added, and we are at the tail end of the hiring process, hopefully have someone start soon. That'll be the seat, if you will, as far as a new economic development strategy. The Economic Development Manager will be primarily focused on interacting with our business community. It could include the Chamber of Commerce, but it wouldn't be exclusively the Chamber of Commerce. So doing what we can to promote the city and retain existing businesses, but also attract new businesses to the city. We'll be studying that more closely with the Economic Development Strategic Plan that is currently being developed, and then together with the newly-formed Economic Development Commission that the council has directed, looking at the strategies more closely. I don't know if Community Development Director Chris Nagula would like to elaborate on that? No? Okay. But in a nutshell, our Economic Development staff, primarily the manager, will be tasked with overseeing these efforts.
I also want to thank you, my colleague here, raised up the Economic Development Team is really good. I really love it. I didn't think about that until I get this position, then you promote this commission. I want to thank you so much and went to extra mile to create such a great team to promote our business too. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to continue asking my council colleagues if they have any questions at this time. After that, we'll have public comment, and then after that, we will have additional questions and comments from the city council. Councilmember Hong, do you have any questions?
I have reviewed all the budgeting kind of carefully, and I want to say something. I know all the city staff, everybody's working very, very hard to try to balancing the budget and everything. But there are two more. One more time, we're going to have the Budget Section. It's on June 12th. I know we all say, okay, this is what we can do, this is what, you know? Uh, I know uh we all say, okay, this is what we can do, this is what, you know. But I think on certain part, I want to see we can more tighten up the budget. Seriously, I know Jeff have been trying very hard to turn the CCPA, you know, around the the situation. But I can see the major bleeding part is CCPA right now. It's of course not nothing personal or not your problem, it's the long term, you know, situation. I know you're trying very hard to try to um turn around the situation, which I appreciate that. And you have hired a lot of good peoples uh to help and do a lot of marketing. Uh, I really appreciate that. But I have to look at the bottom line because I heard the first time, we're only have one point one million dollars but uh budget deficit, maybe. But a couple of days ago, I heard we have increased more deficit. And I know because of financial situation, everybody is in panic because of tariff situation. But if we have such a big budget deficit, I think, yeah, we're safe. However, I don't know how to tell you how we're gonna face it and how we're gonna present it. So I think I sincerely want to, I know it's just talking, but we really have to look into more into the details of the budgeting. So hopefully, of course, we have to do more homework, we have to do more study through all your expertise, you know, experience and uh your hardworking. But I do really think we can tighten it up. We can do a better budgeting. I believe with all our support and everybody's efforts, I hope we can do a better job. Um, thank you.
Councilmember Polito, do you have any questions?
Yes, I I have two questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Polito.
Drew, uh, on slide number twenty, where it says city general fund revenues fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty-six composition in millions. Under which category would our on slide number twenty, under which category would our transient occupancy tax revenues be listed? And exactly about how much are they projected?
So those would appear under other taxes or the
That's what I thought.
That twelve point six million dollar figure there, in terms of the T O T number, let me pull that up.
So the projection, the projected amount for the current year is one point two million. I was right, one point four million is our updated projection and I will look at one point four or five million for next year.
I mean, do you continue to look to enhance uh those uh room reservations?
That was my next question.
Go ahead, sir.
Any thoughts about enhancing it?
Yes, sir, so, sorry.
I can address that. Uh, Community Development Director Kristen and I have been in discussions with Mestrich uh on the potential for a hotel use at the mall property, the former Sears site. Um, we are continuing those discussions, uh, nothing specific this point to present. Uh, and we are, we continuously look at other opportunities throughout the city uh for uses such as hotels that generate a a source of revenue alternative to sales tax.
Okay. Great. Uh, I know that we have had conversations, uh, when I say we, uh, Mr. City Manager, myself, and also Drew, um, leading up to this meeting. And um, yeah, my, I I think uh all the efforts to, as you kept referring to, looking for underneath the couch cushions. I mean, I get that, I get that metaphor. But but also um not just focusing on the existing furniture, but bringing in um uh other opportunities to generate revenue. That's what I thought, that it was under other taxes. I think it's significant enough that, you know, to actually break it out. When I saw twelve point six, I figured that it was in that category, but it wasn't even kind of mentioned in in your presentation. I I think going forward, since we're talking about have a in a robust economic development effort, that we think about the fact that we're in Southern California, that that we are smack dab in the middle of Disneyland in Hollywood and the beach and the mountains, that we take advantage of the beautiful location that Cerritos uh is in Southern California and how everyone either wants to move here, live here, or visit here. And so I I really believe that that's a a great opportunity to have people come and stay here, shop and dine while they're here, be entertained, et cetera. But thank you for um clarifying where we're at with our T O T tax. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, do you have any questions?
I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just three, three questions, but you know, I just need three brief answers. And much of it has already been covered in the presentation, but I kind of wanted to highlight it. I think it's important that be highlighted. Robert, can you, you or staff, uh, please explain what the actuals are versus the estimated and how the city is prudent with our budget? In terms of the actuals and the estimates, estimated.
Sure, thank you. So as was mentioned in the presentation, the budget is a point in time document. Uh, it's, it's the city's best estimate as to what we anticipate in terms of expenditures as well as revenues. Actuals are, you know, can be a different story. Uh, what we actually spend historically at at a fiscal year um is less than what what is projected. In some cases, what's in the budget if on the expenditure side is maybe a worst case scenario where it's it's the the hundred percent of, you know, fully staffed uh situation that we can address, you know, various, a variety of programs and services. But um historically, we have seen um in some cases, a modest surplus at the end of a fiscal year, uh, given actuals that actually took place. So what the budget before you is is given various economic conditions, various priorities of the city are best estimate. Um, I can defer to Peter, if you want to elaborate on that at all, based on your experience.
Yeah, I think, thank you, Mr. Lopez, and I I think Mr. Lopez said much of it. Um, I would say that our our budgeting methodology historically and continuing this year is quite conservative. Mr. Schneider talked earlier uh about vacancies and vacancy rates and these sorts of things. And while we have made tremendous efforts to reduce our vacancy rate, um, it is exceptionally rare, if not uh impossible, to get to one hundred percent or zero percent vacancy rate and one hundred percent uh filled positions. But we always budget as if we have, uh, you know, every position filled, every part-time, every full-time position uh filled. It's a very conservative approach to budgeting, uh, because ultimately we will have some sort of vacancy rate. Uh, there are some agencies that will build in vacancy rates um into their full-time staffing budget. Uh, we have not historically done that and we've not felt the need to do that just yet. For kind of these reasons that we believe it, it keeps us conservative, kind of is a, is a, for lack of a better term, worst case scenario. And so historically, we do end up uh spending slightly less than we um projecting the budget.
Right, so that's what I noticed from the actuals are a little bit lower than what it's actually been budgeted. And that's because, uh, you know, we place our trust in you to make sure that we are within our budget. So thank you for that. Also, and um just share again on the no low property tax, what that means for our residents and how much we actually receive from the county. I know you talked about it a bit, but what is the dollar amount we receive from the county? Because I know that uh other cities rely on property tax revenues. Uh, we do not. Uh, it's um said sometimes by residents feeling that we pay so much in property tax and that that it's coming back to the city when it really isn't. We are not a no low property tax city and I just want you to fully explain that again, so folks can hear it.
Yeah, I'll I'll add, do my best to kind of add some context to that and and so uh a part of that, the big part of that is that we do not, um, you know, assess or levy a tax on our residents and businesses, a local tax here in Cerritos. Much of the impact uh of that is a result of Prop thirteen and um some of the uh calculations that were involved uh when that went into into play many decades ago. Um, the city was quite undeveloped in that initially um was adopted and we have obviously grown tremendously. Uh, unfortunately, that's kind of hindered us on the property tax side because those formulas have stayed pretty stagnant. Uh, that property tax money is essentially paid to the county and the county distributes it out. Um, the the city of Cerritos is a very small apportionment of that property tax revenue. Um, so whereas many agencies are seeing um pretty even sales tax and property tax revenues or uh e- even larger property tax revenues than their sales tax, uh, we are a bit of an anomaly uh in that we receive uh about ten times uh more in sales tax than we do in property tax. Where our sales tax numbers, we're looking at forty, forty-five million dollars. Uh, property tax historically in the last couple of years has been in the four or five million dollar range. So a much, much smaller portion of the of our revenue stream.
Right, that's very, very low, about four point seven five million.
If I may add a bit additional context, we have, Mr. Kemp and I have been actively, you know, in active discussions with the county over the course of the last few weeks, particularly as we were trying to address this deficit number to make sure that we were giving every, we were receiving every last cent that the serious residents deserve from the county. Um, and our executive management team has been working across the board to make sure that we're maximizing every possible dollar we can get uh from those, um, what is collected in the form of other grants and other revenue opportunities from the hard work our community development team does uh with the various propositions. Our public works team in terms of roads and other fund sources, all the down to community cultural services team looking at our parks and and programming to make sure that we are chasing down, but we only are entitled to a small portion of that uh dollar figure. We're going after every dollar that we can get uh through a competitive process.
Oh, wow, I like that, thank you. And last, you know, I know sales tax revenue, like you just said, ten times more than property tax that we receive. Uh, sales tax revenue at some forty million dollars that we receive. Uh, what is our current sales tax rate here in Cerritos? And what are the, versus the current sales tax rate in our surrounding cities such as Artesia, Bellflower, Lakewood, Hawaiian Gardens, Paramount, I'm just naming the gateway cities.
Uh, the current sales tax rate in Cerritos is nine point seven five. Um, that did change when the uh measure was passed last fall related to a homeless funding. So it is now currently nine point seven five percent, which means uh for every dollar you spend in Cerritos, nine point seven five percent uh sales tax goes and gets distributed. Of that nine point seven five, Cerritos receives one, the one percentage point of the nine point seven five. Other cities in the surrounding area, they vary. Um, some cities have adopted local sales tax measures so that in addition to the one percent that all cities get, the cities have additionally assessed uh an additional amount. The the cap that's available to the city uh would be a maximum of ten point seven five percent, so an additional one percentage point. But currently, it's nine point seven five.
If I can add some even additional context, we have done some research into some of the the local cities and what their, what our tax rate uh is compared to theirs. Uh, again, as as Mr. Lopez mentioned, our sales tax rate is currently nine point seven five percent, which was just ticked up a quarter percent at the beginning of April. Um, that is the lowest in Nellie County. Um, there are a few, a few uh agencies that still have a nine point seven five percent um sales tax. Uh, neighboring cities, Artesia, Bellflower, Lakewood, Hawaiian Gardens, Paramount, Whittier, uh, all of these cities, their current sales tax rate is ten point five percent. Uh, and the only, they're the only kind of neighboring city, I believe, La Mirada. La Mirada is still at nine point seven five percent, but outside of that, all of the neighboring cities are uh in that ten point five percent range. Um, so we are still, you know, have still maintained that kind of minimum without imposing a district tax yet. And comparatively speaking, are are quite a bit lower than the neighboring cities.
That's good to know. So for many of us that also go out to other cities, we're paying that ten point five percent sales tax. All right, thank you.
I think Santa Fe Springs is ten point seven five percent.
Thank you.
And um following up on her question, um what is the authority that we can, the city of Cerritos could go up to, or the city of Cerritos could go up to a maximum of ten point seven five percent, which is one percent above our current sales tax rate after the Measure A uh sales tax change went into effect on April one. Where, where in uh the state constitution or state law does it say we can go up to a maximum of ten point seven five percent?
That maximum is governed by state law. I don't know if anyone on the team has any specifics as to where that exists in the law. We could certainly get back to the council on that authority, but generally speaking, it is governed by uh state law as far as the maximum.
Yeah, because I'm wondering why many, many cities had quote unquote maxed out at ten and a quarter. And but you're reporting to us that the maximum we can go up to is not is ten point seven five. Now, Measure A raised everything a quarter percent, but you're telling me it's actually ten point seven five percent. And when the city of Cerritos tried Measure C in March of two thousand twenty, we tried to get a point seven five, a a zero point seven five percent increase, not a one percent increase. You're telling me we have a a potential one percent um amount with the state maximum. So I'm curious where that authority came from, that you're telling us we have a one percent amount that where we can max out at. You had a question, Jennifer?
If I can actually address that, the the last part of your comment. The, the, there are various categories, if you will, of sales tax and some of them um historically have been exempt from that cap, that state, that state mandated cap. Uh, we can provide additional specifics to the council to elaborate on that, but generally speaking, there's different sales taxes uh assessed by different agencies have a different category. And when Measure A passed last fall, uh, there was a net increase in by a quarter, although the actual tax itself is a half a percent. And what they did was they reduced uh by a one quarter percent the the category that falls under the cap and they increased. It's it's a complicated explanation, but in essence, uh, the cap used to be ten and a half and now it's ten and three quarters because of the change in the category of these types of taxes. But we'd be happy to provide an elaboration, additional information to the council to help um explain that.
Thank you. Yet, did you have a question, Jennifer?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. I think um I also have a question because I know the theater, this, I'm sorry, I'm going back to CCPA subject. I know CCPA uh is important because it withdraw a lot of uh residents or people, visitor from other cities. Do we have any, uh, because when they come, of course, we know they they shop here, they dine here, you know, and they even probably stay in the, in Sheraton Hotel. That's why Sheraton Hotel has been very successful. Uh, but my question is, do you have the percentage of uh what is the percentage of uh or the ticket sales? Uh, what's the percentage of our re- uh local residents comparing to outside? It's like twenty, eighty, or do you have a some kind of a number or have you do that kind of report or analyze that?
Uh, yes, thank you for the question. Uh, we, uh, we do look at our ticket sales uh uh quite frequently. It's actually, uh, we look at it, uh, a heat map of Southern California to see where we're drawing ticket sales from the most. Obviously, it's mostly within the local area. However, if you look at a breakdown, it's, it's about fifteen to twenty percent Cerritos residents, local area and eighty percent-ish outside, I'll say, a five to seven mile radius. Also, um, if I could add a little bit more context, it would be important to note at this time that we are also we do have an RFP out right now to try to solicit a firm to come in and provide an economic uh impact survey uh so that we can get a better idea of the economic impact, the precise economic impact of CCP- CCPA operations on the local economy. So that would give the council the opportunity to also review what that uh economic driver is at CCPA and how it's contributing to the local Cerritos economic engine.
Thank you. Um, also, do we have a incentive for Cerritos residents? Like you pre-sell the ticket the first week or for a C- uh residents only? Or they have a special uh discount or better discount?
Uh, absolutely. Uh, all all Cerritos residents are entitled to a pre-sale opportunity for shows that Cerritos is presenting. So that wouldn't necessarily apply to say an outside promoter coming in and doing a show uh like one that we have coming up in June. Uh, that opportunity- That opportunity is not there, that's not our show to, we sell the show for them, but we, it's not our revenue to collect. But for the shows that the city presents, residents do have a pre-sale opportunity. It's generally two to three days before the public on-sale date. We do try to advertise that as much as possible. We do have an email subscriber list for known residents. And we are looking in the near future to create some type of a membership program that would, that Cerritos residents could participate in. That membership program, we're not quite prepared to elaborate on any more details because we're still in a research phase on that. But that membership program could potentially provide all sorts of opportunities for not only pre-sale, pre-sale purchasing, but also discounts and things of that nature. I'd also like to add CCPA also does present arts education performances to local area schools. Those are free to local area schools and homeschools in the area. Our team reaches out to not only the ABC school district, but also other school districts nearby. So we provide six to eight performances a year. And also we've made efforts in the last two years to provide one or two, I'll say no or low ticket cost performances to the general public, which of course the residents are always welcome to join. Those ticket prices are generally $10, so we're looking for a little bit of a commitment for people to show up. But for example, earlier this year, we had Leslie McCurdy in the spirit of Harriet Tubman. It's a one-woman show, it was very successful. And coming up later this month, we have Randy Otto back in his one-man show as Winston Churchill. Both of those performances have been very popular, those are both $10 tickets. So we do try to provide very, I'll say, a cost-friendly options for the residents and for other theatergoers. And we also have really worked on rescaling all of our tickets so that no matter the show that you're coming to, there's always a reasonable price ticket available to the public. So they could, tickets could start at 30 or 40 dollars, possibly a little less and go all the way up to, well, for the sold-out Boys to Men show, it would be $200 to sit in the front row. So we try to build those scales in to give everybody an opportunity to come and enjoy the space.
Well, thank you. This is what I want to listen to because I'm actually asking for most of the residents. I don't think they really know that. And I think you're all heading to the right direction for what you have to propose. And I'm glad to hear that. This is what I want. This is very positive changes and a lot of good, you know, proposal. And it all sounds good. I just want to let all the residents know that we're trying so hard. And then this is what you've been working so hard for. And they need to know they do have incentive because a lot of them, they don't know. So they're just like, you know, oh, we don't know, we have that, you know, pre-sales, whatever. So maybe we should let them know more about this. And all the program and the suggestion that you just made even by 501(c)(3) as a donation, that would really draw a lot of money, you know, to our city with the theater. So congratulations, you're heading all the right directions. Thank you for your efforts.
Any other questions, Councilmember Hahn?
Oh, thank you.
Did you have any other questions, Mayor Protem? Okay, Drew and Peter, thanks again for this report. At this budget study session number two, I agree that we do need a budget study session number three that was mentioned earlier, which we're going to add. I agree that, that we're going to add that to the May 22 meeting. So the, I'm going to ask questions. And so the first thing is I just want to confirm that for 2526, our recurring annual revenue with the reduction in sales tax is going to be, is projected to be 125.6 million. Not the 127.4 million that was in the PowerPoint, correct?
That's what we would be looking at at this point.
Okay, therefore, the deficit that we're looking at for our operating budget of fiscal year 2526, the deficit we're looking at is not the, is not a deficit of 1.1 million as was shown in the PowerPoint, we're projecting a deficit of 2.9 million, correct?
With the updated sales tax numbers, that is correct. And I would just note that the sales tax information was very late-breaking. You know, incorporating those numbers into the book and the presentation.
Yeah, and Peter, I heard you and I'm glad that you made, you and Drew and we made the effort to get those updated sales tax numbers from HDL into the actual city council meeting agenda report. But it's important that we all understand that when the PowerPoint showed that we're looking at a deficit in the 2526 year, it said 1.1 million. It's projected to be 2.9 million budget deficit. And also, no, we could look at this, look at this different ways. But what I, what I saw when HDL also, so in addition to having a budget deficit of 2.9 million for the 2526 fiscal year 2526 budget, when we look at HDL's lower, HDL's lowered sales tax projection for 2425, they projected a reduction, a lower sales tax number of $1 million, right?
That's correct, sir.
So if we had known that correct number a year ago, everything else staying the same a year ago, we would have, we would have had a budget deficit last year too, instead of a $200,000 surplus. So
If I can add a little bit of context to that, Mayor, thank you for that.
Are you going to talk about the operating expenses were also adjusted?
Well, yeah, so then this is what I was going to mention was our estimated operating expenses on either the other side of that. At this, so at this point, we have updated the revenues for the current fiscal year. But conversely, we've also updated our operating expenditure budget down approximately $6 million, $5.8 million.
Yeah, and I don't know, I don't have a breakdown of that the way I have. In two clear numbers, HDL has provided us recently reduced sales tax numbers, seven figures for the current fiscal year and the next fiscal year. And, you know, today we're here talking about the 252526 fiscal year. And we're looking at a $2.9 million deficit. And what I'm saying is we overestimated revenues a year ago. Sales tax revenues a year ago by 1 million, HDL corrected that number, reduced it by 1 million. Just going back one year, if we plug in the correct sales tax projection from HDL of 42,770,000 and change, you know, we thought we had, we thought a year ago we were going into a budget surplus based on that inflated sales tax revenue number. So I understand that we made adjustments to revenues and expenses from a year ago. But all, what I'm talking about right now is the sales tax number, the sales tax numbers that you had the, you had the the good intention and good idea of informing the city council of, with this addendum, which is only, this addendum is only about sales tax revenue projections, nothing else. So I'm concerned about our short-term budgets and our long-term financial, our long-term financial situation. So what can we do? What can the city of Cerritos do? And City Hall do and the city council do to accelerate the realization of the multi-use business, residential, retail, tourist, hotel development at the old Sears property?
Just yesterday morning, Ms. Aguilera and I had a meeting, a phone meeting with representatives from Mace Rich regarding the Sears property. There are various factors that have led to some delays on their part with bringing forth an actual development proposal to the city. We've been talking about the property for years since the Sears store closed. COVID had a big impact initially with their plans, with the uncertainties that resulted from that. The Mace Rich Corporation, which owns the property, is looking at all of its portfolios and reevaluating their priorities. They have indicated that the Cerritos property is a priority for them. Whereas other properties in California, they're looking at, you know, selling them to other entities. But Cerritos remains core to their growth in California. They have informed us that they have some exciting tenants that they are planning to bring forth. They did not tell us who they are, so I'm not able to relay that yet to the city council. Of course, as soon as we have information, we'd be happy to share that. But they have, they reported that they have made progress in bringing in additional sales tax-producing entities, as well as, that I mentioned earlier, the hotel possibility. They're also looking at bringing in a residential component. And while it alone doesn't generate sales tax directly from the property, having new residents who have ready access to nearby shopping does promote additional spending in the community. These are also new residents who have the potential to have jobs in the community. So there are residual benefits to that. So we continue to have those discussions with Mace Rich. The report we received yesterday was very positive, so I'm pleased to report that. We're hopeful that in the near future, we'll be receiving preliminary proposal with more specifics that I can share with the city council at a later time.
Thank you, Robert, but I want to, and I want to accelerate this process of developing the old Sears property. I want to expedite this process. I want to prioritize this project. What do my councilmembers think about that? It's, how long, how many years have we seen this Sears property declining and empty?
More than seven years, I would say.
And when we had the recent meeting with Metro, it was very, I was very surprised and interested to hear that the Mace Rich, the Metro leadership told us that they've been, they've had conversations with Mace Rich. Do you know, do, doesn't, do we, any, do we know what Metro has been talking about with Mace Rich regarding the Cerritos Mall, the Los Cerritos Center?
I'll defer to Ms. Aguilera to elaborate on that.
Hi, yes, good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Early on in discussions with Metro regarding the Southeast Gateway Line, the city helped facilitate a stakeholder connections, not only with Mace Rich, but key stakeholders in the city, school districts, Cerritos Community College, commercial, regional commercial shopping center, property owners, et cetera. And so over the years, Metro has had numerous conversations with all of those stakeholders about really the key drivers for each individual stakeholder in bringing forth the Light Rail project, specifically for Mace Rich. The discussions have been centered around how to, when the line does come, bring additional patrons to the mall. Now, as the city councils know, knows, as certified in the environmental assessment for this Southeast Gateway Line project, the terminus station right now is locate, or is planned for to end in the city of Artesia. And so conversations have been centered around a potential shuttle from the Artesia Station to key areas in the city, the Cerritos Auto Square, Los Cerritos Center, et cetera. And then early on, those discussions were centered around if in the future there is support for a station in the city of Cerritos, how can we more closely connect the line to Mace Rich? And so in short, that is the, you know, kind of high-level summary of those discussions between Mace Rich, Los Cerritos Center property owner and Metro in partnership with the city. I myself have been in on several of those stakeholder meetings and we continue to facilitate those conversations between Metro and key stakeholders in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilera. How much is the city of Cerritos spending because of credit card fees? Paid by city of Cerritos customers?
Looking to our finance team to see if we have numbers readily available and if not, we can report back.
Yeah, that would be, we have so many different kind of payment gateways and areas where money's coming in. That would probably require a little bit more research to give you a specific number on that.
Can we get that number? On how much were the city of Cerritos is paying of our city dollars? Because city of Cerritos customers who use credit cards pay the same price as customers who pay by cash, customers who pay by check, customers who don't use a credit card, okay?
Yes, we'd be happy to report back with that information.
When are we? When is this city council going to get an update on our water and sewer service to our residents that the city of Cerritos is operating at a loss? We are subsidizing the water and sewer services to our residents. The city council has given instruction to staff since before the pandemic to work on reducing the city's loss on the sewer service, for example. We, we instructed the city, city hall to look at this before the pandemic. And now it's 2025 and we're talking about the 2526 budget. And we saw the numbers about the enterprise funds. When are we gonna get action from city hall on this direction of policy from the city council to reduce the city's loss on our water and sewer services?
Yeah, so I have good news to report there. Actually, we have, I have a memo that I'll be ready to send to you in the next day or so. I've asked staff to prepare, providing the council with an update on the current status of that effort. Since taking the role of city manager, I made it a priority, of course, with filling in the key roles in public works and in our administrative services team to take the lead on working with the consultant team to bring that before the council. The good news is we do have a consultant on board and that will be detailed in the memo. We've had kickoff meeting and we're currently compiling the data that the consultant needs to recommend particular water rates for city council consideration. The plan being that that information will be presented at a future city council meeting in the early summer. Following formal direction given by the council at that time, we will take next steps to conduct the Prop 28 process. Conduct the Prop two eighteen process, uh which is uh technically, it's a ballot, uh and um uh as a protest hearing. Those who uh are opposed to it can file that, but assuming it's a majority approval or majority no protest, uh water rates then would become, go into effect. Uh and we're looking for those rates to be come effective uh early twenty twenty-six. But all that will be detailed in a memo that will be coming to you very soon.
Thank you. However, I, I wanna, I wanna understand and I wa, I want my colleagues and I understand. So. On May eighteen, two thousand twenty. The city council unanimously. Passed a motion. To direct the staff to proceed with the commencement of the procedures to hold a public hearing. To consider adopting a rate increase, including completion of analysis of sewer rates, development of a rate schedule and all the processes related to compliance with proposition two eighteen. Why hasn't that been done? Until you're giving us this update today about what you said's gonna happen. Why has it been? Almost six years?
Uh I can't speak for those who uh preceded me, but I can venture to guess that covid played a, a role in some of those delays. Uh we did have some staff vacancies in key positions that. Were crucial to that effort, but I'm, I'm pleased to report that we um, we now have the team who is, is leading the charge and getting it done, and we have momentum there that we'll be presenting to you fairly soon.
When you look, when you look at this. PowerPoint number sixteen. And by the way, I, I'm not happy with that. We're just at the preliminary stages of. Cons, of hiring a consultant to look into these in, uh into this um sewer issue. Um because in the meantime, if you look at. PowerPoint number sixteen. Every year. We have a deficit. So when the city council. Voted on this on May eighteen, two thousand twenty, you could see from that chart. Every year, millions of dollars. Was, was spent by this, by the city of Cerritos to subsidize. The enterprise. Funds. And then just for twenty-three, twenty-four. If I'm re, if I understand how this reads, we, we lost over six million dollars. Just in twenty-three, twenty-four, we lost over six million dollars. Because we're subsidizing. Our enterprise funds. And also it shows me that. Is it correct that? I'm eyeballing it. Is it correct that the deficit has been increasing? It looks like by all eyeballing it, it's been increasing since about two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty. Is that right, Peter? I see you shaking your head, yes.
Yeah, that's correct. And uh you should recall, we did, uh there, there was a, a, a rate hike, I think, that lasted six or seven years before it sunsetted.
For water.
Sunsetted about that time.
For water, right?
For water, that's correct. Water and sewer. I don't remember the exact year that sunsetted, but water rates have remained uh stagnant since then, and of course expenditures, uh expenses have gone up. Uh inflation, just the cost of doing business has gone up and that, that gap has grown significantly. Um but I will, will kind of um reiterate Mr. Lopez's comments and, and let you know that we are working very closely with the consultant already. We've actually. Provided them much of the data they already need. We have a, a follow-up meeting with them tomorrow. Um they are moving rather quickly uh through this. There, there was some time that we had to wait to get through some of our master plans and get a full picture of our uh infrastructure picture. Uh this is a massive impacts on um determining the amount of. Uh funding that we need to um to uh make the water operations um generate enough revenue to uh support, not just the kind of day-to-day operations, but also. The infrastructure moving forward. So we've compiled, we've got a lot of that data through some of the master plans. We've provided them um quite a few years of historical financial data. Uh as well as some of the projections we have in this budget. Um and the consultants are um, you know, getting their hands dirty right now and working very diligently and providing us uh. Uh some proposals for the council uh to be presented in the very near future.
If I can amplify to that, personnel is a key component here, sir. Uh bringing Mr. Papa on board with his expertise uh on the water side was really key to moving this issue forward. I will tell you, when I onboarded here in the city, uh Mr. Lopez indicated to me that filling that public works position was his number one recruitment. And we made a very robust effort to get the right candidate in here who had the expertise necessary to complete that master plan and oversee this water rate study. I'll be very honest with you, sir. Without Mr. Papa's partnership, we would not be able to bring this as quickly as we are able to today. And that is based on the direction we see from Mr. Lopez to accelerate and move uh to bring the right folks into the city to do this work.
Thank you. And, you know, you know, just looking at. The twenty-three, twenty-four deficit. On this PowerPoint of the city enterprise revenues versus expenses. Of, of over six million dollars. You know, and I know it's a different year, but, but that's more than the, that's more than double the deficit. That we're, we're looking at in this budget that you're presenting to us today. Cause we're looking at a deficit of two point nine million. And meanwhile, back in twenty-three, twenty-four, we had a. Enterprise fund deficit of over six million. And like I said. It appears that the deficit is growing over the last few years. I'm scared to see what it's gonna, when you show us this chart. In a couple of years, I'm scared to see what it's gonna be for twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six if we continue to do nothing, just like we've done nothing about this for the past five years. So. Measure C. Failed. By a large margin in March, two thousand twenty. We tried, we at, the city of Cerritos asked the residents. If we can increase our sales tax by three, by point, zero point seven five percent. And it lost by a big margin. It needed a super majority at loss. Here's my question. Four out, four out of the five council members. Listen to Art Galucci, who said, we needed this. Moving forward. In two thousand nineteen, Art Galucci told me we needed measure C moving forward for the fiscal. For the fiscal uh security of our city, the fiscal stability of our city. Measure C. Which was on the March, two thousand twenty ballot. Was projected to get us. An additional eleven point four million annually. What has the city, what has City Hall done to replace that eleven point four million? That we were hoping to get every year since March, two thousand twenty-three. What have we done? And tell somebody, answer that question for me. What? Proactive. Steps. Has the city done to increase our revenues? In lieu of measure C failing and us not getting that eleven point four million annually? Because from March, two thousand twenty. To March, two thousand twenty-five. That's five years, five times eleven point four million annually. Is fifty-seven million dollars. We did not get fifty-seven million dollars. Cause measure C failed. What have we done? These past five years to replace that fifty-seven million dollars? Can somebody tell me?
So sir, uh the, the simple answer to the, the very.
And I know you weren't here those five years.
Absolutely, sir.
Drew, I know that.
But I, I have, you know, looked into this extensively, um based upon trying to figure out how we got here. I think that's an important part of the story to tell.
Why, why did the city ignore? That measure C failed when Art Galucci said we needed that eleven point four million every year? Sorry to interrupt you, and now I'll stop.
Absolutely, sir. Uh but if I may ask, answer the first question and then address the second. Uh I think. Big picture, uh that the simple answer to that question is. Uh unprecedented sales tax growth uh following covid nineteen based upon the shift in market dynamics. Where people, instead of going out and buying experiences, going to restaurants um and going to expensifications, people are buying goods rather than services. And so that significantly, if you go back to that uh sales tax slide, if you wouldn't mind going back to it, Aaron, uh the, the previous year uh number. Uh we, we had year over year unprecedented sales tax growth that largely addressed the short-term uh needs there. Um and so that's why we didn't feel those immediate impacts the way that we would have otherwise, um based upon that measure failing. What I will say is the city has worked, and I can only speak to what's happened last year, um under Mr. Lopez's direction, we've worked extensively. To drive that economic engine and put fuel in that tank. Uh so the major efforts that we've done um is to, we've, we talked about tonight. Creation of that economic development team and building out our economic capability so we can go out there. We have. Trained professional staff who are focusing specifically on economic developments um to, uh under Ms. Aguilera's direction. To go out there and work with our good business community that exists today and go to these conferences and other events to drive businesses wherever we can to, to tell the story of Cerritos. They're coupled in turn with our marketing team. There's going to give them additional tools that we have not had up to this point. To uh to drive that economic engine, to be able to tell our story and to be able to recruit the types of businesses that you just highlighted a few minutes ago. Um in addition, you know, our, our community development team, and I'll ask Ms. Aguilera maybe to chime in here as well. Is, is working on a daily basis to find and identify what are needs of our business community, adapt to those needs. And we built out additional, uh we've just our staffing uh levels to, to address that. One of the most aggressive areas in our class and confidence, classification compensation study, uh those long ago identified by Ms. Aguilera and Mr. Lopez. Was that we were not paying enough uh to go out and recruit the talent that we needed in our community development department. Uh our associate planners, we went out recruitment after recruitment and we were struggling to get a sufficient number of applicants. Ms. Aguilera, I will tell you, my first day here was at my door saying, Drew, I need you to address this. And Mr. Lopez was there to, to uh foot stamp that message. So we've gone out there. Today, uh we are finally in a position to go and get you the staff that, that this city needs in order to do this work. A, as much as, as our executive management has, has puts in the endless hours, they need a whole team of people to support them. And so what we have done as a, as a result of that class and compensation study is to finally deliver to Ms. Aguilera the team of people she needs to drive her engine. Uh beyond that, sir, uh that what we were talking about tonight and a lot of the debt measures we're talking about tonight are going to help to fix that. I know it seems like this is a late in the game. Uh but you know, Mr. Lopez is new in his role as I'm new in mine, and he has made it very clear in terms of his vision of what we need to build out for the city in order to, to fuel that tank. And the key piece was, was getting all the personnel in place. That has been his consistent priority throughout this process, and you see it represented at the table tonight. And this is the first time we've had a true executive management team with five directors filled, and I can't tell you how long, sir. We can't do the business of the city without the staff necessary uh to carry out that work. And now you truly have a, a full executive management team to drive this work forward. Uh beyond that, sir, uh adjusting our rates, uh you, you, you did hit on the nail on the head in terms of that's six million dollars. That's a lot of money coming out of our pocketbook. Uh that we need to, to. Put towards our city services and our infrastructure, and we are finally have the, the, the elements aligned to drive that. Um I, I know it's moving at a slower pace than one would want, but we are moving as quickly as we can to make sure we do our fiduciary responsibility. We, it, there is a great amount of uh, of eyes that go on to these kinds of studies, and we need to make sure we have a complete picture. First and foremost, what the true cost of operating our water system is, whether it's, you know, the daily operating costs through the work that Mr. Papa has done. To map out the true infrastructure needs for that, so that way when we set these rates, we're not just playing for tomorrow, we're playing for ten years from now as to what the organization needs. That is detailed work that requires uh extensive engineering knowledge, and we need to bring Mr. Papa on board to have that expertise. Uh beyond that, uh the conversations we had amongst our executive management team uh throughout the la, this last year have been looking at, you know, how do we do business? Uh you know, all the way down to making sure that, uh as uh Councilmember Hong uh mentioned tonight, we're maximizing our returns of the theater. We're trying to close that gap where we can between. The revenues generated and expenses uh uh earned. And more importantly, truly understanding the role that the theater and our other assets in the city play in driving that economic engine, bringing those visitors in. Right now, today, we can't fully tell you that story. The question that uh Councilmember Hong asked, we, we have some, some preliminary data, but to troll that, that true story. Um as Mr. Tilke referenced, we need to make sure that we have uh that economic impact study. And that economic impact study in turn becomes a great tool for us to use to go out and maximize uh every possible dollar we can get out of the theater. To make sure, as Mr. Plato, you know, referenced earlier, uh that those hotel nights are, are filled, that those trans, occupancy tax. That we're getting every possible night of that hotel used by leveraging our existing city assets and future city assets. So this is a robust, comprehensive effort that unfortunately does take time, sir, but first and foremost, it takes people. And uh I think we finally have the team in place to, to drive that mission forward.
Thanks, thanks Drew. Um what I'm, what I'm wondering though is. You know, part of. Your explanation on. How the city. How the city continued to do the business of the city ever since March, two thousand twenty, when measure C failed. Where. Art Galucci and four of the five city council members hoped to get that eleven point four million dollar. Uh uh annual amount. That didn't. You know, we didn't replace that just with sales tax. Or, or unexpected windfall of sales tax. Over those five years, have we been? Maintaining the city? Taking care of the infrastructure? The way we should have, or have we been deferring things?
I can speak to that. Um there. Post the end of redevelopment and post the Great Recession that occurred uh two thousand eight. There was a period of time in which the city had deferred maintenance. Uh there were some tough decisions that had to be made uh to slow spending. Uh you know, to basically do the bare minimum needed. Efforts were made uh. After two thousand twenty, I'd say two thousand twenty-three, in that timeframe, when the very first time the city began a, a budget strategic plan process. Um with the council direction, we did increase uh spending, we, we revived the spending on uh streets, doing repaving. Other, other efforts, um but what we've now demonstrated through this process is in order to. Really get back to where we need to be in terms of that maintenance to, to get caught up on that deferred maintenance, uh we do need additional sources of revenue. Um we have a modest CIP uh proposed uh in the upcoming fiscal year, uh much less than I would like to recommend, uh because there is a lot of need out there. Uh we have in the budget, uh a list, an appendix with a list of unfunded projects. These are projects that we've identified. The council has identified, we are aware there's a community need. Um that there simply aren't dollars for. And so, um but we know that there is a need, so we've acknowledged it. Um but uh there was a, a, a ramp up in effort uh in the last couple of years to do more in terms of the. Um the, the streets, the sidewalk repairs, the pine tree removal replacements. Um but uh more, there's a lot more work that needs to be done.
Are we doing everything that we should be doing over these last couple of years?
Uh one thing that I've asked our staff and, and it was touched upon in the presentation is to seek additional source of uh funding, grant funding, for example. Uh we actually have uh members in our public works team that are um focused on uh looking at those sources of revenue. Also, a member of my office, city manager's office, has been uh working with um entities that can assist in that effort. Uh so we are looking at those alternative sources as well to help supplement um and do the work that's needed in the CIP.
Thanks for answering my questions. I will now open for public comments on this item. Seeing none. Are there any speakers on this item? City clerk, please announce for the record the written comments received for this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Prior to the meeting, the city council received full text unredacted copies of the three written comments submitted for item nine D by the deadline listed on the agenda and for inclusion on the official record. Request for copies of written comments submitted for this meeting can be made to the office of the city clerk during regular business hours.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. If there are no. Additional public speakers, I will close the public comment period. Does the city council have any additional, additional questions or comments? Councilmembers say, do you have any additional questions or comments?
Uh since I'm new here, um I just wonder how long you've been working this position, uh Mr. Lopez?
Uh I've been in my current position since November of two thousand twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three. And then Drew, you just got hired, right? I wanna sincerely wanna thank you so much, and I wanna thank you, Mayor, that you brought this important pieces out to share with us, you know, we definitely see the deficit ahead of us. And now I'm asking, please, the staff, I know you pretty old knew this position and it's really hard to carry on. And Mayor had bought the very important part is we are such great deficit there. And Mayor had bought the very important part is we are such great deficit there. Are we going to tighten up? And we're going to put it back on you again. I want to sincerely thank you. I'm putting you at the spot today. But I sincerely appreciate this work together, make sure the neighbor receives the services supposed to have. But meanwhile, we're looking forward to how we're going to be straighten tightening up budget here to improve our future budget. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Hong, do you have any additional questions or do you have any comments?
I think I just want to mention one thing about the budget deficit. I mean, we've been on the board since March 26. When we first get the budget review, we saw 1.1 million. But within a couple of days ago, I heard another increase. I was shocked. Because even if the inflation, it's not going to happen over the week, you know, or one week or two. So for them to project that much more budget deficit, I was really stunned, you know, like. It is the professional service that giving us this advice, but how could they be so far off? That's my question. I'm sorry, I have to ask very brutal question. Thank you.
Councilmember Palito.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, for. Having the hard conversation. That took a lot of courage in order to kind of ask a lot of specific probing questions so that we could get a better sense of. Where we're at and putting it in a historical context. I really appreciate that. And you talked about two, two things that I want to address. One was rail and then two. The economic engine of the Los Cerritos Center. And I specifically want to talk about the nexus of it. And then I want to highlight two horrible decisions that were made. Basically for petty political reasons. First one is. A council member who lost the chairship to the Orange Line Rail Authority. Then came back and made the motion to withdraw us from the Orange Line. Orange Line is what is now called. The Southeast Gateway Line. That happened about 2014 before said member left the council in 2015 due to term limits. I know I was there. When that happened, I believe it disincentivized Mesa Rich to continue with Phase Six expansion of the mall. They had just completed Phase Five Expansion. We all know it. Dick's Sporting Goods, Cheekscape Factory. Parks and Theater. Everything looked up. And then something happened with Sears and then 20 acres became available. And it became very evident that, wow, what a great opportunity. This is a decade ago. To develop that 20 acres, a decade of missed opportunity. I believe what happened was what Mesa Rich told Art Galucci, then Art Galucci told us on the council was. They're going to focus now on Santa Monica Place, which I don't even think is in their portfolio anymore. Because why would they invest when there's no rail coming down to Cerritos anymore? So that selfish petty decision to pull us out of of an agency that we helped found. I think started. This situation. And the second one was, and you called it. There's one, two, three, four council members who voted, but one big surprise chose not to get behind. Measure C in March of 2020. I would term out April 1st, 2020. So we made the right decision, I believe the four at the the advisement of our city manager, Art Luci, at the time that. We need to do something. To generate 11 million dollars annually going forward. And you you called it, that's 55 million dollars that. Didn't materialize. That 55 million would have come handy in, you know, balancing our budgets. But that one person. Then campaigned against it. In the in the community. I think that's what killed Measure C. So two selfish decisions. And I'm just being frank because, you know, life is short. And I didn't think I was going to come back, but I came back and now you're asking the hard questions and staff, new staff. A lot of new folks that we just congratulated for being on the team. You're absolutely right, Mr Schneider, that it takes people to to solve these problems. It takes some courage. So I commend all of you for doing what you can to basically try and fix the situation. But this situation was the result, I believe, because of bad decisions at this dais. Okay, I'm not naming names, I could. But you could look into it and the viewing public will be able to see this forevermore electronically. I think people should have the courage to take a look exactly why we're in this situation. This is my humble opinion. But. I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and help make some hard decisions. Along with this staff that is assembled that are making the hard decisions and giving us as much good options as we can. But I agree with you. I think we need to expedite. Our economic engine. At the Los Cerritos Center. We need a partner. I think there needs to be a meeting, just like we had a meeting with with Metro. Even before I got here, when I was still a private citizen, when I was campaigning, I asked for a meeting with Mesa Rich and I got it. And I sat down with their their team and I told them what I felt and I told them my my view of history. And they were nodding heads, yeah. You know what you're talking about, Mr. Palito. I said, just call me Mark. My first job was here at this mall. I care about it. There's some people who don't care about the city. They fake. That they care about the city and that they do things at this dais to hurt us. We got to reverse this. So. I would love to see a meeting with, I don't know if if there's any internal. Committee that could meet with Mesa Rich, with with our city manager. With whoever is going to be brought in for this economic development team, right? But. I I agree that we need to start really focusing in on this. Hey, on this, how do we generate more revenue? Because we're no no low property tax. We only have one hotel. TOT, what I mentioned earlier, that's small, miniscule. The way we generate, what was it, 4.5 billion in sales in order to generate 45 million? And sales tax was the largest chunk of our revenue is build out that mall. Make it so that everyone wants to come. And from their their own characterization, we rule the day from Brea all the way to Torrance. Because those are our two nearest competitors, Brea and the Lamo Fashion Plaza. They all come here. I think even Long Beach knows that. I'm sure Drew. You're part of the that leadership team before you came here. I think we ruled the day only second to South Coast Plaza. Is that correct? We're missing an opportunity if we don't jump on this now. And I and I think Linda, our mayor pro tem, had talked about the upcoming Olympics. We need to build this now. Because people could stay at a hotel there, they could shop, they could dine. They're going to take a look around and go see the best run city in the Southland. They're going to want to move here. Right? Two generations ago. On the other side of the planet, people from Taiwan, South Korea, India, the Philippines, they all came here. We're walking all of our our heritage right here. There's a reason why they came here because on a hope and a promise of good schools. Right? Safe neighborhoods. We sold that. We even sold them the best public school in the nation. You know, that's humble opinion. But that's what got people before their children were even born. Calling a certain high school in town, how do I get my kid who's yet to be born into that school? Right? All of that somehow, no one's talking about that anymore. Because some people made some bad decisions. And they got away with it. Until now. So thank you again, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me this opportunity to kind of just. Share my thoughts about where we're at. You you gave the qualitative analysis. Call this a qualitative analysis. Okay, put it together. Let's get to making some good policy decisions and building a better budget and. Yeah, I'm going to shut up now.
Thank you, Councilmember Palito. Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, do you have any additional questions or any comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I really am so very much supportive of what my colleagues have shared with us tonight. Wanting to be more aggressive and progressive in making sure that our city is. Bringing in the economic development that we desperately need. And I wanted to add to Jeff's comments earlier on the CCPA and thank you, Councilmember Hong, for realizing. The efforts being put forth by this CCPA staff, you know, in fact, the Philippine consulate, who I've been meeting. I met once last week and they're coming again this Friday, has placed the CCPA at the top of their list. As a venue for their events. It's just too bad. Some of the dates don't work, but that is just how important. The CCPA is to the Philippine consulate. So we have folks looking at us here now in Cerritos wanting to come. Just like what Mark, Councilmember, said, you know, there was a time and I remember he is so right when. Folks wanted to buy a house here before their child was even born, just so that they could go to the good schools here in ABC. And same thing here, I want folks to be excited about Cerritos, to come here, to raise their families, to shop and dine as well. So while our sales tax revenue forecast is not what we had hoped it would be, I'm pleased to see with the prudent use of fund reserves. This will provide us with the means to balance our budget. However, this is not sustainable in the long run. We cannot continue to use reserves or use vacancy savings or defer maintenance of our streets. Our roads, our sidewalks in order to balance the budget. We need to invest in our employees and our city infrastructure. So capital improvement projects are projects that help our city's infrastructure. These are projects that repair or replace the air conditioning units in the buildings, repair or replace our roofs. We improve our playgrounds and our picnic shelters and for almost all of our residents, the need to rehabilitate our streets and sidewalks. And address our tree reforestation program. Because of budget restrictions, we are reducing the funding of these projects down to 23 million this year. The city infrastructure is aging and next year is our 70th anniversary. We need to give our city a facelift soon. So that Cerritos remains attractive to families, but not just to our family, city, Cerritos families, but to also attract. Others from other cities to attract economic development, to attract development. So investing in our city should be a priority and that's exactly what my colleagues have said tonight. So at some point, this council needs to be provided with options as to how we are going to move forward. And I look forward to those discussions. So separate from what we've been talking about, the budget and some of the gloom, doom and gloom we've been talking about. I also want to kind of, and I think it's appropriate time to discuss it because we are in budget season. To kind of reimagine, reinvent some of our festivals. And our special events here that occur in the city. And I'm going to request that we eliminate the Harvest Moon Festival. At some point in the future, when we can like reimagine it, it should be a lantern festival. And I think my colleagues here would understand that the Lantern Festival is actually the second largest festival celebrated in China. Following the Lunar New Year. So if we're going to celebrate, we do it right with a more traditional Lantern Festival, which happens. In February or March. As far as I can recall, the Harvest Moon Festival was never approved by a city council. So I'm not even sure how the city ended up funding it. I'd also like to request for staff to revisit the Santa float and recreate it as a Santa sleigh day. This would be a one day event with like a mini parade route around the Cerritos Town Center area. And then we end up at the CCPA with some kind of activation for families and kids to enjoy. Most of the time, as it is now, I should say, as it is now, the float goes out seven nights. For almost three hours each night. Most of the time, the evenings are cold, the wait is too long. Which means that many kids and families are out waiting for a float to come by. And I'll tell you, by 8:30, there is nobody out there waiting for a float and that float is still going on until 10:00 PM in the evening. There's no opportunity to really take a photo. It's going by so fast. And a one day event, I think with a Santa sleigh day will be more cost effective. Allow more time for kids to interact with Santa, take a photo with Santa. And also by not having it go out for seven nights, we are reducing staff time by not deploying it out. By not deploying out five Recreation Services Division staff members. We're not deploying out two Public Works Department staff members. And we certainly are not deploying out five to seven sheriff deputies that we don't have to take away from their regular patrol duties. So just like the Harvest Moon Festival, I'm not sure how council was, previous council. Didn't give direction to establish this. However, I am grateful for Supervisor Han for the $25,000 in grant funds to help build the float. And last, on April 26, the LA County Ube Fest, what Councilmember Say was talking about, was held at Kenaby Park. There are 50,000 people in attendance throughout the day. It's the largest event I've ever been a part of. And in the spirit of bringing back economic development to the city, I'd like to ask staff to bring back a report. Before the June 12 budget meeting on having the city partner with the Ube Fest organization. For to consider it as an annual event to be in the city. The organizers are very eager to work in partnership with the city. They will produce the event and solicit sponsorships. In fact, Los Cerritos Mall and the Cerritos Auto Square were sponsors for this event. With the cancellation of the Harvest Moon Festival and the reduction in expenses for the Santa sleigh day. This should not be a, there should be no significant budget impacts on the Ube Fest. Especially since we're no longer funding the chamber at $62,000 a year. Again, I'd like to thank our city manager, city attorney, city clerk, all of our department heads are here tonight. All of our managers supervisors are here as well for taking the time. It's 11:30 at night and you guys stuck it out and. I appreciate your support and hard work and putting together this budget. You guys were the ones making the difficult decisions. To come up with a budget that could be implemented into our our handbook here, our budget book here. So I think this is the first time that this council has come together with this great staff, so. And I really appreciate each and every one of you. So I guess I I would have to make motions. Is that correct, City Attorney, for some of the requests that I've had? And I can split them up if I have to.
That is correct. You should make separate motions.
Okay, so when it's appropriate, I will, after the mayor speaks.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So. I'm just going to start off my additional questions, comments with. Drew's words. He said tonight, we are budget constrained. And at another point on the PowerPoint. It said, we are well equipped to manage short term deficits. So we need to take. Fiscally responsible. Action. We need to make fiscally responsible decisions. The residents of Cerritos. Told City Hall and the City Council, do something about our budget. Without increasing our sales tax in Cerritos. You're not going to get the 11.4 million dollars a year from sales tax. You need to get it somewhere else. So. But first, you know, first I want to. but fir- you know, first I wanna put, I wanna, I want to make sure that we all, we understand that our residents, um, have expectations about being Cerritos residents and the programs and services available to them as Cerritos residents, we have to do something to make sure we continue to provide them services, the programs and services, um, whether it's from City Hall, or from Public Works, or from our facilities, our library, our CCPA, our parks, we have to figure out, starting now, how we're gonna continue paying for those programs and services that our residents expect being Cerritos residents. So, we have jewels of our city, our senior center, our parks, our library, our CCPA. It bugs me when people keep pointing at the CCPA. What city facility has the biggest operating deficit in the city, Drew? Did I ask you this at any point before right now? Did I ask you this question, no, right?
No, not, not I believe so, sir.
Okay, so what city facility has the biggest operating deficit in the city?
Let me pull up my notes real quick, sir, it's a bit of a complicated question, we don't normally look at city facilities as operating in a deficit or-
What cities, what city venue?
So in terms of any single venue, um, in terms of direct revenues generated out of that venue versus cost of operating that venue, um, our, our, our library would probably be the single points.
By mu- millions of dollars more than the CCPA?
Yes, sir.
Correct? So let's stop blaming the CCPA for our budget deficit. Okay, Jeff? I got your back. And the service that the library provides to our residents and to non-residents is invaluable. Just like the services, um, the, what our library provides to its patrons is invaluable, what our CCPA provides to the patrons of the CCPA is invaluable, same with the parks and the senior center. But let's stop saying that the CCPA is causing our city, uh, to be in a, a financially, uh, insecure position, because our library for the twenty-twenty-five, for the twenty-five-twenty-six budget has an activity total of five million, eight-hundred-twenty-six thousand dollars. And, uh, library fees and fines is forecast to be forty-four thousand dollars. So that's over five-point-seven million dollar operating deficit. Okay? And there's no way we're getting rid of the library. Okay, so, I'd like information about what are the credit card fees that the city is losing money on because cus- uh, city of Cerritos customers are paying by credit card. Okay? We also need to be proactive, and we need to get, we need to figure out how to get money, like our neighbors, neighboring cities are getting from the federal government. Our neighboring cities use and have used federal lobbyists. And it's shocking to me that the city of Cerritos does not have a federal lobbyist. So I want the budget for twenty-five-twenty-six to include federal lobbyists, so I make a motion that the city of Cerritos twenty-five-twenty-six budget include a federal lobbyist.
Second.
Hey, can you, can you put the, uh, vote up on the screen?
Motion passes on a vote of four to zero with one abstention.
And, um, I'd like the budget study sessions to include information about, um, the Civic Center, City Hall being closed every other Friday. What is the fiscal impact? What is the fiscal impact of City Hall being closed every other Friday? And what is the fiscal impact of the library being closed every other Friday? And what is the fiscal impact of the library being closed every Friday? I'd like the city council to have that information. And I've already asked the city manager to give the city council all the community group funding applications for this twenty-five-twenty-six budget. Um, thank you to Mayor Protem Johnson to asking, uh, a lot of questions about how this community group funding gets into our budget, and I've been on the city council since two thousand seventeen, and I've never seen a community, community group funding application. And I think the city council should see that every year. So starting now, I want all those community, I've asked the city manager for all the community group funding applications to be provided to the Cerrito City Council, so that I can make informed decisions about them at a future budget study session, number, number three, or, number three or number four, ahead of approving the budget. But we can't we can't, um, just rubber stamp giving these community group funding requests, uh, rubber stamp them in, in our budget, because as Drew said, we are fina- we are budget constrained. So, do any of my council colleagues have any motions they wanna make? Concur with the community group funding applications, thank you, Councilmember Say, so please-
Yeah, I concur that.
So, Councilmember Say concurred that she wants to see those community group funding applications?
Since we stay, we're talking about the, our budget constraint right now, so we do need to see whatever money goes to, and how much we support them, is it necessary or not?
Okay, Linda?
Would this be appropriate time for me to make my motions before you do the final motion of this agenda?
And, and what I'd like to, to say to the, my council colleagues, are there any motions you wanna make, or is there any information that you wanna ask the city manager for? So that we can make informed, uh, discuss, have informed discussions and make informed decisions in the next couple of meetings, the budget study sessions culminating in the June twenty-sixth budget study approval meeting, the budget approval meeting. Linda, go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, I have three separate motions, uh, they are related to the budget, but, uh, they're also a way of also reimagining, reinventing our current festivals, and should not have in, a significant impact on the budget, or maybe even less of current, um, uh, allocations. So my first motion would be to eliminate the Harvest Moon Festival and to reimagine it in the future as a Lantern Festival, Festival to be celebrated in February or March.
Second. Um, can I have a, a verification, clarification on this matter, if you might? Well, honestly, between the Moon Festival and Lantern, does it cost a lot of my budget on our, for the Moon Festival?
I can defer to members of our team to talk about, um, costs associated with, uh, putting on those festivals. Um, Annie, do you wanna start and defer to anyone on the team?
I believe I asked also the same question, and I, I know the numbers.
Yes, thank you for the question, the Autumn Moon Festival, I believe the cost for that particular event is less than four thousand dollars for materials, but staff time, it would be an additional roughly twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yes, so twenty-five, so you're totally sixty-five hundred dollars, right?
Less than that, actually, the staff time is a little lower, so I'd say the event typically runs, um, and it depends on material costs, which may be going up, as we all know, um, but I'd say the event is approximately fifty-five hundred dollars.
How's the participation, the people, how many people participate there?
We have had over a thousand people attend typically, and, um, our Acting Recreation Superintendent, Samir Patel, is here as well, he may have some additional insights, but I know that, uh, the festival last year, our Autumn Moon Festival, um, I believe that we had more than a thousand people in attendance.
Well, I, I just wanna share with my colleague, when I look at this program, I feel there's a community engagement, you know, you have more than a thousand, and it's some kind of workshop and storytelling about the other culture, and then, um, give a volunteer opportunity to get in participating in our program, and, and also see the diverse programming for the city and the community members. And we offer multi-language material and, um, translation during the event, I believe so, and as a Chinese word is going today, um, Moon Festival, um, versus, um, Lantern, Moon Festival is actually, is kinda get-together, kinda beautiful, the culture beyond the back, and it seems the participation is not too bad, in that you get a community involved. I would ask, and we also partnered with the local business, do we, on that day?
We do invite some local businesses that offer food trucks to come out onsite, and they do sell refreshments, and the event also includes some, um, craft activities where people can write messages and make designs on their lanterns that they then set in the water out at Heritage Park.
Do we have a collab, I mean, that, for this, uh, program, do we collaborate with the school and library for educational components, 'cause I know, do we include that?
Okay.
We have not in the past, but if that's something that the council would like us to do, it's certainly a very nice suggestion for any one of our programs.
But I just feel like we provide a very sensory-friendly activity, with quiet spaces for all those, um, parti- people participating, and also we provide a marketing and promotion. I don't know what happened, uh, whoever people put out that program, maybe didn't get the council member approved that, but I'm asking my council member consider one more time, it costs sixty-five hundred dollars, but I have other area we can look into it to, uh, constrain the budget and spending, but if this is one, it's a public, I mean, get the community involved, um, I would not, I would support that continuously, but hopefully, um, they're really gonna bring our neighbor together, and more culture-sensitive to other needs, this is a very good one, the festival, the Moon Festival, has a, has a meaning story behind the back, not just only for Chinese, I know Korean and Japanese all have that, uh, things about this Moon Festival, it's happy things there, yeah, it's gathered together. And, um, that's my, um, thought, thank you.
I second the motion.
Yes, I did, uh, I did second it, because my reason is that Lantern holiday is very important, next to the Chinese New Year, this is like the, uh, ending of the New Year celebration, so it's very, very important for us, and of course, I like more events, but I'm just saying, we're getting, you know, we're, we're replacing it with another event, so that's why I, I'm for it, you know, I vote for it.
Okay, thank you for, uh, clarifying that, you seconded the motion, so we have a motion and a second, can we vote?
Motion passes on a vote of four to one.
Okay, Lin, uh, Mayor Protem?
Thank you.
Uh, the next one, I'd like to make a motion to cancel the Santa float on its seven-day
And one-day Santa sleigh day, and for staff to, uh, bring back a report on how they're going to reinvent that.
Second. We have a motion and a second?
Motion passes on a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, colleagues, and my last motion, again, in the spirit of bringing economic development, um, and also with, uh, the organization, the Ube Fest organization, uh, producing and seeking out sponsorships for this event with no significant budget impacts, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to, for staff to come back with a report, to, uh, for a partnership with Ube, Ube Fest Organization to be held here in the city of Cerritos.
Second. Can we vote on the screen, please?
Thank you, colleagues.
Do any of my colleagues have any motions they wanna make, or any requests for information from the city manager? Councilmember Palito?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I don't think this requires a motion, but I just wanted to reiterate the, a request to have a, a meeting with Mesa Rich, uh, representatives, uh, obviously with Mr. Mayor, uh, and, and a council member, uh, I don't necessarily have to be in it, I, I've met with Mesa Rich already, but, uh, if no one's interested, I'd, I'd love to join in that meeting with the mayor and the city manager and whoever is the appropriate people on, on staff that have been in communication with Mesa Rich already. Thank you.
Okay, any other, uh, motions or requests for information from the council?
Uh, Mayor Yoko Yamet, if I may, um, if we could get clarification, um, either by consensus or vote of the council, the two items that you raised earlier on, uh, staff bringing back a report on City Hall being closed every other Friday, and, um, the second item was obtaining, uh, a federal lobbyist in fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six.
Yeah, the city, the city manager can, um, uh, research, he can research, uh, having, uh, a city, having a federal lobbyist on retainer, just like the city of Cerritos currently has a state lobbyist on retainer, for whatever reason, the city of Cerritos made the fiscally responsible decision for many years to pay and have on retainer a state lobbyist, and we don't have a federal lobbyist, let, like, many of our neighboring cities have a federal lobbyist, so I, I'm not, I mean, do you, are you unclear about it, city manager? Do you, do you have, do you have anything you're unclear about, about adding a city, adding a federal lobbyist to the budget?
Uh, that's very clear, what, what we can do with, with the direction from the council is to incorporate that in the updated, uh, information representative future budget study session.
Yeah, and include it in the budget.
In the budget, yes.
Because what we're doing right now is having a budget study session, and the city council, and the members of the city council can approve the budget or ask questions- And the members of the city council can approve the budget or ask questions. Um and make comments at future budget study sessions and at the budget approval meeting on June twenty six. So what I'm asking the city manager to do uh with his leadership team is incorporate a federal lobbyist into the budget, so we could see what that looks like.
I concur that because the reason I upstand that is because I want to know the budgeting first before I can really vote for it or not.
Okay, great. Thank you for that explanation.
Um Mayor, can I ask one question? Why Friday, not Monday? Because in general speaking, Friday and Saturday, Sunday, most family are going to the library, especially Friday.
So, so.
Monday, if you study, if if staff can do study.
Would you like that that request to be included in the information that we're going to be getting back from the city manager?
I would prefer that, thank you, sir.
Well, include it.
Included month.
Okay, so did you hear the uh council members um request for information?
Yes, and we'd be happy to um outline options with regard to days for a potential closure.
I say Monday.
Which facility are you asking about?
We talked about library, that you proposed the library closing on Friday.
Yeah, so you're, you want to look at what 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 the fiscal impact would be if it was closed on Monday?
Yeah, I also want to start to some study, how many people are, you know, come down Friday or Monday, even more people coming Friday. Then we should consider as a Monday closing.
Good question. Can we include the attend, the uh number of patrons per day of Friday and Mon- and Monday compared to the other days in the information, please?
Uh yes, we can. We can provide any available statistics um and provide the information the council needs with regard to potential days.
Thank you, sir.
And a related question is, when are we going to uh? When is the RFP going to go out regarding the LA County, the Los Angeles County provided services in City Hall?
Uh we do have uh staff working on that based on past council direction. Um staff in the community development has been assigned, given that the building and safety services come from that department. Uh we do have an active um RFP process that we're in the middle of now with regard to transit services, so that is currently. Uh I think we've received the proposals and we're evaluating them, getting ready to make recommendations, but uh first, more specifics, I'll defer to Ms. Agula, who can outline a timeline.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening again, Mayor and members of the city council. As Mr. Lopez indicated, we are in essentially the thick of soliciting, well, we've already solicited proposals, but selecting uh the city's next transit operator for the city's uh general public on-demand service as well as our uh on-demand service for uh residents who are seniors and or persons with disabilities. Uh we, as a matter of fact, tomorrow will be holding interviews with uh the selected group of uh proposal summities, uh submitters. Um and following that, we do intend to bring uh an award of contract in June to the city council for those services. And so uh right now, uh community development's efforts are focused on that. And then um here soon after uh the interview process concludes, we have first interviews tomorrow and likely second interviews the following week. Um uh we can focus efforts on preparing an RFP for uh building and safety plan check and inspection services. I will say, sorry, one more thing. Uh in the meantime, uh staff is currently reviewing contracts for other cities who have transitioned plan check and inspection services from County of Los Angeles services to private entities. So we are doing research on those contracts as well as conducting interviews with those cities. We're having discussions with those cities as to ensure that when we do prepare the RFP, that it encumbers all services needed for the residents of Saritos and the development community.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Agula. Anything else from my council colleagues, any other motions?
I have one.
Councilmember say.
I would not call motion, I would say uh opportunity to review, if you can, for our budget. I know some, my colleague may not like what I'm proposing to. Um when we were talking about trying to save the budget, the Moon Festival, uh the the Moon Festival sixty five hundred dollars that we cut it out because it's costly. But I'm looking for other area too, and people may not like it. I want to, first, I want to thank you all the commission and committee uh had done a great job to service our city. Um from the background, as you all know, I'm seventeen years of school board, and we have a committee too, and then uh it's tough, and I I want to thank the people participating on City Saritos. But however, when I look into it, at the detail, you know, the cost between sixty eight hundred, sixty eight thousand dollars from the thirty four, from tw- year twenty twenty three to year now, the 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 revenue has been gone up, went up. So I'm looking, I take, I went to, you know, take a look into really carefully, I want to see what is the cost of so much? And has they, has the people participating at all the um meeting? I realize some of the committee only come every third month, some come every other month, but I do receive the stipend every month. I like to see some of the where they, and also conference, if all five go to the conference, what can we save on that matter? Does cost money on that matter? Do we really need to find um committee or commission go to the meeting versus we, when we gone already and we if we can't in the future, looking to say, do we have to have five member go on the conference? It does cost a lot of money, cost budget for hotel, flying, you know, transportation. Um I would like to propose, if we can, uh appointed two people to go to this conference and bring it back and share with other, along with the staff, staff and two uh committee go along with that. It's not say, I want to put in the proposal today, I want to to concert to agree, but I'd like you folks to take a look and see. If we can look into it, do we really, I I know some people say, oh, they study, they um, that's what they get, that's stipend, but I like to take a look. I like to see how much we can come up some idea, how much we can save. There's one of the area we can look, take into it. It's just opportunity, have you reviewed this project?
Okay, any other, any other motions or requests for information? Okay.
Just a point of clarification, was there a motion to direct uh staff to pay back something specific on that?
I would like to take a, take a look.
Would you like to make that motion?
When we talk about the budget study, we, as far as I know, I can recommend the staff take a look into it, see if any way we can save, it's worth or not. I didn't ask people to say, hey, this is what I want. I just want to say, if you take a look, can we save some area? I know I get, people get upset, I understand that, but when we're talking about budget constraint, you're talking about from one million to two million. The every area, I mean, even starting from the the top, from the administrative people, all the way down to even to be including everyone. And I think this is the one I like to propose to take a look into it, so it's worth it to um cut some of the area. Such as conference.
So council members say, are you making a motion, are you asking for information from the city manager? Okay, so she's asking you for information, uh city manager, do you understand her? Do you understand council member Sei's request for information?
Yes, we'd be happy to report back uh just to outline what the current budget situation is for commission and committee members with regard to travel and the meeting and the stipends and.
Can you provide that in a memo to the council?
Yes.
Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, so seeing no other motions, we're done with item nine D. Item nine C, um I asked for consensus to table that until the next city council meeting?
Concur.
Okay, let's move item nine C to May twenty two. Legislative items.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, we don't have any legislative items to present this uh this evening on either ten A or ten B.
Report from the city manager, does the city manager have a report?
Uh just a brief uh note of gratitude to our team who is here this evening, who worked hard on presenting the information, preparing the information that was presented. Uh I appreciate their attendance here and I thank them and their teams for their hard work.
That's it? Thank you. That was a good one. Okay, council, city council communications, I'll start with council member Sei. Item eleven B, city council communications.
April twenty sixth, it was a busy day for me. Um the morning I attending ABC in my school district interview for the candidate for my trustee area five, I was very nervous. I was there from the beginning to the end. And I want to come, take this uh opportunity to congratulation to Ms. Jenny Mahanton uh being appointed for ABC School Board uh trustee area five. Um the same day, I attended Wubei and our Spring Fling. So funny, I've been residing here forty one years, never attend Spring Fling before. And but that was so, it opened my eyes, and I started, I said, this is my duty for the next couple of years, I will encourage many people to attend. Because it was wonderful, and Wubei definitely bring a lot of uh, I bought so much food that on that day, bring home and share with my kids. It was a wonderful event, and I I absolutely support it. Hopefully, next year, we can get more uh uh festival to bring more people to our city, that bring more uh revenue to our city. So and it seemed um, so I really very pleased to be there and and like I said, this type of event not to only bring joy to our community, but also generate revenue and support local business. And so I can't see, as I, as I saw, I drove the car around the area, I said, wow, so many people today. So I want to thank you, our mayor protein, but a really good idea. Um I think it was May first and second, we attending couple meeting. Uh one is the city lead summit at Sacramento, okay. One of the thing I bought back here, and a lot of people holding the signs, they listen to voter and find what matters and protect our city. I I was very pleased to attend in the meeting because I learned so much, not just some meeting the people, some colleague I haven't seen for a long time, because like tw- fifteen years I haven't seen for a while until that day, I meet so many people, and I want to thank you, my colleague here, mayor, and can I introduce us to everyone? And bring us around that, I I I want to thank you to participate and helping the new uh elected councilwoman to know the people. Especially Eddie Chan, the one, I haven't seen him for almost ten years, and he went to hug me, say, hey, congratulations. Say, how do you know? A Chinese newspaper tells who you are, you got it, winning that position. So it was great. And then the following the week, we attending the SCAC, uh the regional conference at the Palm Spring, Palm Desert. Uh this two major conference I attend, um I really learned a lot. And we have an opportunity to, I have opportunity to meet one of the the senator. I exposed my uh thought about the safety issue, I say, you know, no matter how much money we hire, we pay the sheriff. No matter how much we increase the neighborhood watch, but there's something I also like to propose to him, I said, can you uh look into some funding to the our city, Sarito city? If you can't uh give us incentive to the neighbor, then we start have um installed this security window. And that window is not the bar that we were talking about, it's very fancy, nice looking, I have in my home now. I I like I mentioned to, I shared my uh personal experience in the past, I got broken two times, and that is really scary. And that um that can never get off my mind, and I was afraid for a long time until I got this security window in play, and sliding door in place my house. I I feel much better now, you know, even though and I don't even have a security office, I mean, security insurance on me anymore. I just use a ring, and it works very well. So and then he said, he'll take a look, he'll take into it and and get back to us, he said, that's a good idea. So be a a council member, I do have a great chance to meet the people that express my thought and share why my suggestion, at least he heard something. At least something is bring up directly, there's no in-between that um middle person. So I'm really glad for this position and have chances. It's two-folded. Uh like I ma- uh ma- uh like I mentioned, this message uh resonated deeply with me and reflect my commitment to make our city even better. So during the summit, I had a chance, um like I mentioned senators, one idea I shared was a security window. I have to read my notes. And um I want to thank you, uh thanks to Ms. Lopez, I really want to appreciate the past month that you have been helping me out, understand a lot of thing. During my uh campaign, I have a couple dream that I want to fulfill, and one is on the North Rim. And I want to help as volunteer team, and you helped me out, and you did contact the Caltrans. You realize a lot of issue that wasn't not being prepared, being doing by then, so you are working with that. I want to let you know, I am here, I am a volunteer, I am willing to go on the freeway to clean the freeway, to make sure our city once again go back beautiful and clean. The second part is we're talking about the nine one one on-call system. Many ci- many city has this program, if resident pay eighty dollar per year, the resident can call for free nine one one call without hesitating, you know, a lot of senior people here, they're so way, so afraid to call nine one one. Um because it costs money, but there's a program there. And unfortunately, our city do not met that uh criteria because we don't have our own fire station. But still, I and I thank you again, say, hey, there's still a chance you can go this coming meeting again to express my thought with the one of the senator of Congress, well, hopefully, we can make some change of fire department, hopefully, we can make some changes there. My goal that I present during my campaign, and I want to fulfill that, that's two things right now I'm working on. It's honor of Ram cleaning our city, the second part is a nine one one call for the resident, if we can, especially um for senior people. So I want to thank you again for helping me out, and thank you Drew to go over with me the budget, you know, I sincerely appreciate. It takes you folks a lot of time, and thank you Kathy and Ryan too, and I really appreciate, made my life a little easy here. And then, well, while we continue work with you, and let me know if if there's anything that I can help you, I'll be glad to. Thank you, and my end report.
Councilmember Hong.
Thank you again. I have to say good morning, everyone. Are we still awake? Okay, um just joking, okay. April, uh I just make, gonna make it briefly, I'm just telling you um a report of what uh events I have attended. April twenty third to twenty fifth, I joined the League of California Cities. I'm so honored to uh meet all the um and join all the city leaders at the California State uh legislators for a powerful afternoon uh of our um and have a wonderful political dialogue with them. Uh express what our city need, and our city staff, you know, already prepare all the information, so that would make our um conversation a lot easier. Of course, we asked for the funding for the safety, we asked for the funding for our infrastructure, which is very important. That is why I think the trip is very worthwhile, you know, for us to present our city and to meet all of them and let them know our city of Sarito is here, and we need their support as well. Okay, the second one I win uh is the um uh April twenty sixth. Uh fortunately, I was invited by Linda, uh male pretending Linda Johnson to join the um uh I'm sorry, it's April twenty nine, I'm sorry, it's for the LA County Sheriff Meeting. Uh through that meeting, I do learn a lot, how we our city have, how we construct the contract with the um the the law enfor- enforcement, and it's very educational, and I think um that is why, why are we having a sheriff station instead of a police station, you know? And that really benefits me uh to explain to a lot of residents to understand this situation. I also attend the April twenty sixth fireworks celebration at the Don Canaby Park for our um uh sixty ninth uh birthday of city of Saritos, and the city staff did a great job um for all the events as usual, thank you. Um the lastly, um what I attend is May first to May second SCAC meeting. This is a very important meeting, and I do, I think this is very important. We do have, I do learn a lot of doing a lot networking, and of course, uh Robert has been very ca- uh very helpful, he always, he's there all the way guiding us what we should do, what we shouldn't, you know, uh what is the purpose for our trip? And that is very beneficial to me, especially for the first time to attend that. And through that event, I've seen a lot of leadership, collaboration, and this is very important. And I think I really enjoyed the trip and I do learn a lot. And I think I'm very happy to present our city and I'm very proud to be there and thank you.
Councilmember Palito?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the interest of the late hour, I'll table my councilmember report to the next meeting. But at the appropriate time when we adjourn, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of a longtime resident. Thank you.
You want to just go over that right now, that, announce the adjournment? And we will adjourn in the memory of your request?
Right. I'm very sad to share the news that I just had learned about that on the morning of Friday, May 2nd, longtime Cerritos resident of more than 50 years, Rick Needham, passed away at the age of 84. He had been a longtime resident of Cerritos, like I said, for more than 50 years and a loving husband to his dear wife of 58 years. Our former mayor, three-time mayor, and the first woman mayor of Cerritos, Diana Needham. I'll always remember Rick fondly as just a really good guy, really good, decent man. A loving husband, wonderful father, grandfather. Yeah, and, and a good neighbor. We, we, we lived in the same neighborhood all these years. So I would like to express on behalf of the city our deepest condolences to the Needham family, to all their family and friends and loved ones for their loss. And may they find comfort in this difficult time and in the days ahead. And may he rest in eternal peace and may perpetual light shine upon him. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. I'm also going to defer my report till the next council meeting. However, I just want to bring up that I wanted to get council consensus to have our October 23rd council meeting rescheduled. There's a conflict with an event at the Cerrito Center for the Performing Arts that same evening. So perhaps staff can get back to us with some other date options, if I can have consensus on that.
Yeah, given, given that, given that it's not urgent, can we, can you make a request to agendize that at the next meeting?
Oh, yeah. I'm not, in no hurry, I'm just giving a heads up. So whether it's agendized at the next meeting or a following meeting, we have lots of time.
So you're, you're, you're asking for consensus to agendize moving the October what meeting?
October 23rd.
So Mayor Protem is asking for consensus to move the October 23rd
Meaning, reschedule.
2025 Cerrito City Council regular meeting. I concur.
I concur.
Thank you.
So I, you know, I offer prayers and condolences to the Needham family and Diana Needham. Rest in peace, Rick Needham. I also want to let the residents know that we will continue celebrating and recognizing Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month at our March 22, 2025 city council meeting. And we will, at our May 22, Cerrito City Council meeting, thank you. And we will also be celebrating and recognizing Jewish American Heritage Month at our May 22, 2025 city council meeting. Close session. The next item is item 12, city attorney. Will you please announce the close session items?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. We will now adjourn into close session to discuss three items that are listed on the close session item on the agenda. Item 12A, Public Employee Performance Evaluation of the City Manager pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957. 12B, Public Employee Performance Evaluation of the City Attorney pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. And 12C, Public Employee Performance Evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 of the City Clerk. Thank you.
We will now adjourn the special meeting and the council recess to close session. Thank you.